I will call this meeting, this special meeting of the Albany City Council to order. And I'll read the land acknowledgement. The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Villages of La Shahn. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloneye tribe. We thank them for their contributions, which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home. Let's see, Clerk, can we please have the roll call?
Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Here.
Councilmember Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Lopez is absent. Vice Mayor Mickey.
Present.
Mayor Tiedemann.
Here. And I'll note for the public that we had originally scheduled to have Councilmember Lopez with us, but I believe he had a late-breaking family event of some sort that he could not miss. But he, rest assured, this will come back to us once we've given our feedback, so he will have a chance to give his input. It was just an unfortunate snafu. And that brings us to item three, which is our work session. Am I handing this over to you? All right.
Mr. Mayor, Sean Spano, I'm happy to be involved in for the strategic planning session. Just getting ourselves organized if you have your packet there for a couple of ideas.
On here. There were a couple other handouts added to that. So one is the annotated agenda, and then there's another document in there, which is the one-page results of the pre-workshop survey that was distributed. And just to walk us through the materials here, in your packet, obviously, you have the public agenda, and then there's your current strategic plan is next. After, with newly formatted, we might say, and we'll mention that in just a moment, strategic plan. And then you have the strategic plan status update, which was put together by a staff. And then the last two documents, one is the iceberg model of city work, and the other is strategic planning elements, goals, objectives. So with that said, then, we'll be informal today, moving offsite, moving outside of council chambers, more of a discussion and a dialogue around your strategic planning process and your, specifically, your goals and objectives. We will work through three major items today. One is a check-in on your mission statement. The next is not a detailed recap, but a touch base on your strategic goals and objectives from last year, and do a check-in, and that status update will be very helpful for that. And then the third segment, the majority of the segment today, and where we're sort of the heart of the meeting, is what are your goals and objectives for the next year, from March 2023 through March 2024? And so ideally, where we would leave here today is council giving staff direction. Here are the X number of goals that we want. Here are the objectives that council wants staff to move forward on, and we'll stop at that point. It probably will not be all tied up with all, everything all refined and, you know, wordsmithed out, but we'll make sure that staff has enough direction for you. They will refine, add text language to that, and then bring that back to you at a future council meeting for your formal approval. It would be great today if we worked by consensus and you all agreed to these strategic goals and objectives. That would be awesome. And if not, we can do some informal straw poll voting, just to get a sense from the council. We'll see, we'll see where we're at when we come to that point in the, in the meeting. And just the last thing I'll say is, council, this is council strategic plan, your goals and objectives for the coming year. And part of that development, obviously, is your authority and within your realm of authority. But we also want to make sure we have Nicole and Isabel here, your city manager and assistant city manager, make sure that they're part of the conversation, because I really do see this as a, as a collaboration. I put down a couple agreements, speak candidly, listen openly, maximize participation, which will be easy enough to accomplish. With that said, then, I'm ready to jump in. If we're on the annotated agenda, will be kind of our primary document for today. I'm ready to jump into our first segment, which is the city government mission. Are we ready to jump into that? Okay. So you do have a current mission statement. Albany is committed to providing a healthy, safe, and accessible city, and strives to lift every voice in our community. So Councilmember Jordan, Mayor Tiedemann, do you know where that came from, being senior members of the council? Was this last year? Does that predate your participation on council?
I believe it was modified last session.
Okay, okay.
Simplified, modified.
Yep.
Took the, I don't know, the urban village or the small city. I don't remember where there was some element to it that was...
Some weirdness that we wanted removed.
Yeah, fair enough.
So yeah, it was rewritten, I think, when we last did this.
Great.
Yes.
Okay. Still relevant, useful, Vice Mayor Mickey, Councilmember Hanson Romero, what are your thoughts about that? Is it still relevant, useful for your organizational community and political context? Any changes to that? Not that there needs to be, we're just checking in. Is that mission still, still compelling, still relevant?
I think it's still relevant. I will wonder why we lost the urban village moniker, but, you know. It does not have to be in the mission statement, that can be in other, other forms in which Albany describes itself.
I mean, we went lots, through lots of wordsmithing on this.
I'm not asking us to rehash that, I'm just...
I appreciate that.
Not even, I like the term urban village.
Very good. We do not need to spend any more time, and if it was just updated last year, my suggestion to you is take a look at that next year. And is that still relevant? Your environment changes, and that might need to be tweaked or edited, or thrown out completely, and a whole new mission statement inserted, depending on where you are next year. With that said, then, let's move forward. We're on to the 2022-23 strategic plan review and update. So that document in your packet, which is the status update, is the key document here. And what we're not going to do is, we're not going to go through that document item by item. That sounds painful, there's lots and lots of details in there. But what we, what I do want to do is just get a sense from you all about where your perception, perspective, your assessment about how last year went. And before we jump into that, let me just mention two documents at the very end, and I'm not sure, we do want to come back to this document here, for sure. But right now, let me just real briefly, just walk through the iceberg model, and that gets us organized on strategic goals and objectives. So my way of doing strategic planning, which is pretty conventional, it's not hot in the box, it's a pretty standard way of doing, with this iceberg model, which is very... So this is from John Hill, a professor of public administration, was also council member and mayor in Lawrence, Kansas. I'll take it. Was also mayor and council member in Lawrence, Kansas, so he sees this from sort of the academic side, but also a practicing politician. And so his, his idea is you've got an iceberg, and you've got the iceberg sits above the water. Well, what's above the water line? You'll see at the very top there, vision for the city's future, its council's goals and priorities for the community, for the city. That's what's above the water line. Also, to the extent that staff is working on innovative process improvements, modernization of the organization, that's also above the water line. It's, it's special because it's not part of the day-to-day work of the city. That's what's below the water line. Below the water line is the everyday work. Permits get put out, I'm seeing some Public Works folks out here doing construction projects. You have admin services, contracts, procurement, right? All the day-to-day stuff that happens. Really important, day-to-day. But strategic planning is, what's above and beyond the day-to-day? What's above the water line? And sometimes, what happens is, council will say, here's our goal for the coming year. They give directions, staff implements the goal, widely successful. The goal was implemented, now it becomes part of the everyday work of the city. So it was, it had special status above the water line, but then it moves underneath the water line, because now it's just, it's not special anymore, it's part of the day-to-day work of the city. But the key point here is, what's important in Albany for the coming year? And that was the, the pre-workshop survey that we'll come to. What are your priorities for the coming year? In other words, what needs to be above the water line? And you're signaling to yourself, you're signaling to staff, and you're signaling to the community, this is what's important, and we're going to put, going to put special emphasis on that this year. Also aligns to the budget process, because there may be extra resources that you want to devote to those special three, four, five, six strategic goals and objectives. So how's that sound for everyone here going forward? Makes sense in terms of what we're doing? So what we're really focused on today is what's above the water line? What's above the water line? And then the second page, real quick, are strategic goals, objectives, and work plans. Obviously, you have strategic goals, identify what the organization wants to achieve over the next year, five years, 10 years. Big, broad statements, big goal statements. Underneath each goal are one or more objectives, sub-goals, enabling goals. They're much more specific, because we need to do these three things, accomplish these three objectives, in order to accomplish that large strategic goal. Council is setting the direction, the vision for the organization, and the priorities. Here are our goals and objectives for the, the coming year, and giving staff that direction, and again, signaling to the community. Underneath those objectives are work plan, work plans. This is really staff's document. Staff says, oh, council has given us this objective to maintain enhanced streets, pavement, et cetera. Now Nicole, Isabel will work with Public Works to work out, who's going to do that? What staff are going to do that? What's the timeline? What resources are needed? And so it gets really down into the specific, who's going to do what, with what resources, in order to accomplish that objective? And it's not that council should be excluded from the work plans, but staff develops the work plans, and then, I'm, I'm a big advocate of staff getting that in front of council, so they see what staff is doing, and maybe even asking for approval, but it's a staff developed document. And that was one of the reasons for changing, making the newly-formatted strategic goal, because you had strategic goals, objectives, and then work plan items. And so what we did was, we just moved those work plan items up to objectives. They're pretty specific. You got very specific in terms of some of those items there. Nothing wrong with that, but, but again, this is where staff's voice should come in, right? Should come into that. And so we'll see where we end up today in terms of what those goals and objectives look like. But again, if it's okay with you all, you're going to say, we're good with goals and objectives. That's our sort of purview as the, as the governing body here. Okay, staff, go develop your work plans, we've given you direction, it's in your court now, and come back to us and keep us updated. So that all sound okay for everyone, as a way to go forward?
Yeah. Can I add some context?
Please, yes.
What we, before we get into the previous work plan with how we did it last time? Because I think on the iceberg model, we definitely had this in mind, or at least I did, and I tried to remind us all of it incessantly, last time we talked about this, of, we are trying to thread a slightly odd needle of putting important things in there while not just putting stuff that is the core business of the city in there, because we could fill this whole thing with stuff like that, and it wouldn't really be important or make a difference. And there are some things that are very clearly core city business, and there are some things that are live more on the line, and, you know, you could make an argument for having them in core business, you could make an argument that we can put them in goals. It sometimes depends on if we think we need to improve those substantively, or if we're already doing fine, you know. Responding to emails, pretty core business, we don't need to put that in the work plan. But there are other things that are trickier to figure out, and that's what, a lot of what we did last year. And then, just on the objectives and goals versus work plan items, this is a, I just want to note a change of how we're doing things, which I think is good, of previously, most of this meeting was talking about work plan items. And we made a real effort, probably thanks to Councilmember Jordan, to simplify those and not have 1,000 of them. So we have tried to make this doable, but now we're slightly changing that. If we're still going to talk about the things that I think would be work plan items, we're just going to talk about them in a slightly different place of objectives. But I just want to note that for how we did it last year versus how we are going to be doing it.
Thank you for that. And it does, it's not always a super clear dividing line, right? It gets a little squishy sometimes when you've got this objective, and when you start getting pretty specific about that objective, it starts looking a lot like a work plan item. So it's not always a really clear dividing line there. And that's the overall structure, but what I, what I would encourage us to do, not do today, is get into, is that a goal? Is that an objective? And making these fine little nuances. I think the key part of the end of the day are your priorities for the coming year, are they in the strategic plan? That's the key focus today, that your priorities, what you, your vision for the community is in the strategic plan, those above-the-water-line items. That's the key focus. Whether it fits here or there is probably not as important, well, you tell me, but I don't think it's quite as important as your priorities in the strategic plan, and it's going to get attention, resources, and so forth for the coming year. Jennifer?
Essentially, I'm...
Councilmember?
I'm thinking of it here as like, we're going to throw out a bunch of information, and you're going to help us figure out how to organize it.
Yes, yes.
Effectively.
Yes, how to package it. And really, what's important for you? What are your priorities? What do you want to see accomplished in the coming year? If you just let us know that today, we can sort it all out afterwards, and refine it, and put it in the right place, and put language to it, as long as we get enough direction from you. That's the key, that's the key focus for today.
I'd also like to, you know, because you were talking also about including and working with staff and stuff, I'd also like to get their insight and their thought process as far as like, what kind of things that you think are in the strategic plan now that are effective, and what could be improved upon, so.
And, and staff's voice is so important in this, you might be, you might say, well, here's a great objective underneath a, just throwing out a climate action goal, and staff, wait, wait, hold on, we don't do that. That's the EPA, or that's the county, right? So we can't put that in our... That's right, that's the sort of the collaboration that needs to happen.
Exactly.
Okay, if we're ready, we can move forward and, and do a, a touch base on what happened last year, and, and do you mind putting up that document? It's just this, one of the pages from this strategic plan. So you've got, obviously, you've got five goals, and you've got your objectives underneath that, and you've got...
Sean, do you mind using your microphone?
Excuse me?
Could you use your microphone?
What's going on? Why, why, that's first one? It was a, been with Albany, in the...
Did it work?
Fabulously.
Oh, awesome, awesome. Great. So you have the, the status update from what happened last year, and again, lots of details in there. But just at a higher level, what are your thoughts, some of the questions from the annotated agenda? What went well last year with these goals? What was challenging? Are you happy with the progress that was made? We're not going to, we're not talking quite yet about 23, 2023, 2024. We'll get there, but this is more of a retrospective. What do you, what's your sense about how things shaped up over the last year? And that'll be interesting for Councilmember Hanson Romero and Vice Mayor Mickey, not having been on council. But you're part of the community, you ran a campaign, you have all sorts of things to share here. So what are your thoughts here about any of the goals? So you've got foster a healthy and sustainable city, engage our diverse community, I believe the other one is open space, yes, maximize and improve parks and open spaces, economic development and the arts, and the last one is accountability, government, facilitate government accountability. So any thoughts about what happened last year? Anything jump out at you from the status update? Yes?
Well, something that just jumps out at me initially, right on the get-go, is, is number four, I feel like needs to be separated. The economic development doesn't quite feed completely together with the arts. I think it kind of muddies it up there. And I think the arts too, in working with the arts committee last year with the economic development, to try to see if there were some partnership program that could be done there. What I learned is that, and I don't know if this is something that can be changed or not, but it's, the arts funding seems to be very specific on what it can be spent on. And I'd like to see if that could maybe be opened up to other things, but I don't know if that's actually something that can be done. Like, they're, they weren't able to pay for any like performance base, or, you know, it was very strict as far as how the funding was spent, so.
Excellent, thank you. And as we go through, sort of assess what happened last year, we're listening for what that means for the coming year, and we're not ready to do that yet, but after we do the, the update, what do you want for goals and objectives for 2023, 2024? And maybe economic development stays in, maybe it's separate from the arts, maybe the arts moves out, it's really dependent on council, and what your priorities are and what your preferences are. Other thoughts about any of the goals or objectives from last year? Observations?
Yeah, I found, well, I think as I relayed last time, I'm a concrete thinker, so I found the first one a little too abstract.
Yeah. It's a big goal.
Yeah, I mean, I found it so abstract not to be that helpful. But in general, I focus on the work plan items, so I'm too far in the weeds.
Okay, okay. Any thoughts about those from, from last year?
Other work plan items?
Yeah, yeah, and they're in the status update.
Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, to my eye, it looked like there were about 40, lower 40, and 10 were completed, and 20 are in progress, and 11 weren't started, which kind of fits with what I was pressing for with the last session, which is, the council isn't doing its job of controlling its app site. And I think there's an incentive for each council member, I mean, included, to, well, if you, you want your item in, fine, put your item in so I can get my item in. But in the end, that results in, to some extent, staff choosing what to work on, because they have to, because there's too much to work on. So to the extent that we think that this is emblematic of what would come over the next two years to 2025, then maybe 30 to 30-somethings, where you have buy, you know, the buy statements, so there's the objective, and then the buy statements and the objective are the work plan items, so maybe only 30 of those. But I'd be interested in hearing staff's perspective on my perspective, because I may be completely off-base.
What was your tally in terms of accomplished and in process?
It was about 10, 20, 10. Keep it simple, yeah. And then the 20 in the middle are, you know, some of them are just very beginning stages, some are close to completion, so.
Nicole, any general statements just about the work last year of staff, and how you all managed the 40 work plan items from last?
Yeah, and Sean, just to be clear, this was for the last two years.
Okay, last two years, thank you.
And then the strategic plan is for the next two years.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, you know, I think the reflection received thus far is completely accurate. We've made significant strides in a lot of areas. We're proud that we've been able to check some things off in terms of fully completed. Some of them may not have been completed, because perhaps they're stale, and we're never quite on the mark. Others may be so day-to-day that they were very straightforward, and likely already core services expressed up into the strategic plan in a different planning stage a few years ago. Areas where you may see very little progress, there's likely more than one reason. One being unforeseen circumstances, as we've experienced so many issues at the local government level, either under our control or outside of our control, that we respond to day in and day out. Never an excuse, but a reality. Also, potentially with some of these, us lacking the resources, or even when we do have the time, the bandwidth to really get in deep and carry that through in a sustainable way, without being interrupted by something else. And I feel like the more that these get nuanced and complexity, that's likely part of the reason. Anything that may be in our planning or public works realm certainly can get pushed off, without any disrespect to the priority given, knowing that we have some other major projects underway that, you know, for example, in the community development world, if a planning project comes through, that becomes immediate priority, as we are providing that service for the community and for that potential developer. If those take a significant amount of resources, some of the more creative thinking planning has to take a slower approach in that regard. So that's just one example of many. I think also, you can never put enough detail in this plan. And while we're proud that we've accomplished what we have, there's likely a myriad of other things that we've accomplished under each of these goals and objectives, that aren't necessarily reported as, as clear and concisely or effectively as they could be in this format. And so to speak to Sean's point about format and, and tracking over time, we're looking forward to hopefully enhancing that more, so you can really see some live updates as we go forward with the larger goals and objectives.
It is interesting, and strategic plan, you have right above the water line, and then you have below the water line. But there's other items that come up that you could have never forecast, anticipated at the beginning of the year, and it's not like those are not going to happen, it's inevitable they're going to happen, so, and they're not factored into the strategic plan at all. You were going to make a point?
Oh, yeah, I was just wondering if like, if there's anything currently in place, or can there be something that is put in place to, you know, like you were mentioning, is, you know, there's been a lot of things that have been checked off, but do we have any sort of increment of time to go back and review what's been done? And if the, if that change or, you know, implementation of something made a positive or negative impact, and kind of like, just going back and reassessing after some time's been done, once something's been put into place, I just want to make sure it was something that was useful, and didn't negatively impact another area, so.
Did it accomplish what it was supposed to accomplish?
Exactly.
Right? And did it have unanticipated consequences, positive or negative?
Yeah, because I feel like sometimes things are, you know, pushed out there and done, and then nobody thinks about it again.
Right.
And then you're like, oh, wait, maybe, maybe this didn't really make the change that we were hoping it was going to, to make, so.
Which is so important to come back and check in on your strategic plan on a regular basis. Other comments? Yes?
Yeah, if I could provide a little more context to my comments. So I was very enthused at the progress that was made, just to be clear about that. So again, my point was not frustration that, say, 10 items didn't have progress, but rather, I think we've given staff too many items. And I was, as I say, I was enthused by the progress that was made. There's a lot of items that take, well, certainly more than a year, and many more than two years, and so even if staff started on every single thing the day after the strategic plan was adopted, a lot of them wouldn't be done in that timeframe. So that's just the nature of, of the items. So I just want to be clear that I understand that, and I guess my question for staff is, if with the 40 or so items that were in there, does staff prefer to have sort of more items than is reasonable, so that you have flexibility? Staff has flexibility in making some, some choices? Or does staff prefer to have fewer items with more of an expectation that, you know, more of those will be worked on? Or does staff prefer to have fewer items with more of an expectation that, you know, more of those will be worked on?
It's a great question.
Who can let you ponder it if other people want?
I wonder if we have priorities, right? Like certain things, maybe we tiered them in a priority sense or something.
Yeah, she talked about that last time and she said that actually isn't so great because it's really, it's just really hard.
It's, it's all about adaptive management in local government. And I say that having lived it and having experienced it day in and day out. I think my best answer to the question is if the council feels comfortable, and I know we're getting to this in a bit here, with, with the updated format. Because again, I think what that does is by words, you indicate what your priorities are and, and what that goal and objective mean in terms of you visioning an accomplishment. How have we successfully accomplished this goal and objective and what does that mean? Versus the prescriptive work plan. Because my fear with that, and I've, we've, we've realized that with some of these, is they become stale or they don't quite hit the mark. And then you've got a two-year work plan with the subject matter experts thinking, well, yeah, I know what they meant, but this is really what that would be. And there's, there, there will always be a divvy in some of the more prescriptive, detailed, technical things that I, I don't think are effective in deliberation at this level. It's, it's what do you want to see happen? Okay, we'll figure out how. And if it can't happen, we will report back and figure out what else.
Any other observations from the past year? Questions? Okay, we can move forward. Let's, um, you have the one handout, which is the results of the survey. So four of you were able to fill that out and I do have feedback from Councilmember Lopez, so that's good. I do want to share this feedback with you and I think this does set the, the stage then for where we'll spend the rest of our time, which is selecting the goals and objectives for the, for the coming year. So it was very encouraging for me to see that there was a lot of consensus among the four who completed the survey for these four objectives, actually a little, little bit more than four. But across the board, on the four, promote housing availability and quality. And the, the, these four are not in any priority order, except that you all said this is a priority for the coming year. So no surprise, right? Just given where everything is. And part of that, promote housing availability and quality, increase housing production. Vice Mayor Mickey, can we look at building codes and fire codes and reevaluating those to increase housing production? The whole focus there, increasing housing production. Second, and I shouldn't say second, another priority, climate action and adaptation. Notice, housing is under Goal One, so is action. Your climate action plan also under Goal One, Objective One. Four said that is a priority for the coming year. Transportation and safety, Councilmember Jordan narrowed that down the street specifically, but comes underneath transportation. That was another priority, and you'll see that's also under Goal One. So you had three objectives under Goal One being priority for four council members. And Councilmember Hanson Romero, jump in here and let us know what, you know, whether this aligns to your priorities or not. And then also interesting here was diversity, inclusion, and I, and I added the word equity in per Councilmember Jordan. And it came up in a lot of different ways, but you'll see that Goal Two is really, is called engaging our diverse community. Objective One is, is geared towards youth. I know that was very important to Vice Mayor Mickey. Objective, that was, I'm sorry, Objective One. And then the other Objective Two was economic diversity. And then Three was, remind me?
Uh, no, I think, yeah.
Yes, unity and inclusivity, thank you. And then also under Goal Three, which is the parks, maximize open space in parks. You'll see that Objective Three, which is, and?
Culture, facility and opportunity.
Yes, and so Councilmember Lopez had identified that. But it all falls within that larger framework, right, of diversity, inclusion and, and equity. You also see under, at your economic development and arts, Goal Four, the objective underneath there. Objective One is also about inclusion and diversity. And I know Vice Mayor Mickey actually wanted to beef up the language a little bit there, but there is about businesses owns, it calls out specifically businesses owned by people of color and, and targeting there.
Now, I'll say that we do have a huge diversity as far as business wise. I think that we should be very, very proud of, of the amount of diversity that we have amongst our businesses. Especially the, the, you know, we like to not say small businesses, but independently owned businesses. So anyway, but yeah, I, I'm very proud of what we have there. And yeah, I would like to encourage to continue that, but I, I think that we're, we're actually doing quite well. And as far as women owned businesses as well, we've got a lot of women owned businesses like Along Solano in San Pablo, so.
Excellent. Your thoughts about housing availability as a priority, climate action as a priority, transportation safety, streets as a priority? Do those align to what you see as priorities for the coming year?
I will say my, uh, yes, however, I also want to really focus on that economic development and increasing revenues because I've, what I'm hearing from staff across the board in every single department I've spoken with is, you know, it's, we need more revenue so we can hire more staff, so we can provide more services. So I like to go back and try to look at the root of the cause because all of this other promoting housing and all that other stuff is going to need more staff people. It's going to need more people who are able to give their time to really devote and focus on those items. So without that growing, growth of revenue and income stream, we're, we're kind of fighting against ourselves, you know, so.
And so that does take us to the other priorities, and I don't mean to minimize these, but there, there was a lot of consensus on those top four. But these were also mentioned and, and so we'll add your name on to that. I put economic development here and you'll see Goal Four, Objective One. And that Goal Four is, the way it's phrased right now is government accountability, maintain government accountability. But, but the objective underneath, I'm sorry, economic development Goal Four, Objective One was economic development with diversity and equity. But you'll also see secure government resources, increase revenues, what you just said. Mayor Tiedemann and Councilmember Jordan also mentioned that in the same way you were talking about it. This isn't just maintaining, this isn't just about accountability, it's about increasing revenue. It's about finding new revenue sources and dealing with the deficit. And so that, that changes your Goal Five a little bit. If you don't mind me saying, your Goal Five's a little passive, right? Government accountability, that's below the waterline. You would want to have, it's not like we're just going to be accountable this year or next year and then we're done, right? You're accountable all the time, but you really want, what I'm hearing you say is we need to put a focus on, on increasing revenues. And maybe that comes through economic development, but through other channels and other, and other sources as well. So does that all make sense? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll just offer my focus on Goal Five, Objective Two is not increasing revenue to increase staff, although that would be nice. It's to meet the unfunded pension liability, which is number one, so that comes first. I, I think a lot of these other items that we would like to have done, you know, whether, I think it's a matter of the correlation between the amount of staff and the speed with which it can be, be done. But having followed the city for twenty-five years, the existing staff is capable of getting these things done. It's just a matter of how fast you want to get them done. So I, I don't personally see the need or the priority on increasing staff size unless, you know, writ large.
And for you, it is about the unfunded liability? That, that becomes the priority for revenue?
Yeah, because that's gonna go catastrophic, I mean.
Yeah, and, and I think for me to kind of maybe riff off of what Councilmember Hanson Romero said and Councilmember Jordan said, is that unfunded pension liability, as that keeps increasing, it makes it harder on our staff to keep the staff we have, to pay our staff. When, when I think we are right now in a situation where every department I've talked to says they're actually understaffed. And they're doing a great job in providing services we need today, but they're all understaffed. And that has helped us through lean years budget wise, but that's not going to last forever. And I think one of the things, to your point about how diverse our businesses are and what a great community we have. I mean, I, I just look at the number of breweries, theater, cider stores, wine places that are happening in our area, on top of all the, the, sorry, independent businesses we have and the diversity of, of those ownerships. And, and I just keep thinking about part of our economic development has to be blasting that out to the world. That we have the first bus transit stops, we have all these diverse types of places to eat and drink, we have all these diverse types of places to shop. Because in that sense, the more that word gets out, the more we attract those businesses, the more some of the shop fronts that are empty now or don't appear to be very active, we build more of that economic development. Because we as a city can't just wave a magic wand and suddenly make businesses appear. But we can do a great job of promoting our community and, and making sure that people know. And then there's the other side of it, what can, what, what things can we do to, in, in some of the goals, it talks about reducing fees or remove some of that red tape to make sure that we can get businesses in as quickly as possible, so.
Yeah, so when I was sitting on economic development, that was one of the key goals that we were trying to do is to try to, you know, and this, that was actually four years ago, I think, is when we were trying to put out a pamphlet, like a kind of a welcoming, trying to really attract other businesses into our community, giving them the reasons why, why they would want to open up shop here. So yes, we definitely have to do a bigger job at promoting ourselves and boosting ourselves and really going out there and, and, you know, hunting for those businesses that are going to make a real successful difference within our community, so.
Thoughts here on the survey results?
Yeah, so is, is the thought, or is a thought that these would become the objectives plus or minus of the new strategic plan? And if so, you're noting that three of them under Goal One before, so maybe those would get split up?
Goal, to eliminate all of them.
Yes.
And move action of climate, housing and transportation as standalone goals. So what do you think about that? And then maybe we can start actually putting that up there as a link, piece of a, a link piece and say, one of the goals, these will be Goal One and just numbering these, but not priority, Goal One, Goal Two, Goal Three.
And?
Climate action, housing and transportation as three goals. And this is going off of Councilmember Jordan's proposal. And then you have keep Goal Three, which is, we can really increase parks and open spaces. And we're going to have, a little different decision, but checking on this, an economic development revenue generation. Combine economic development and facilitate government accountability, just to the point you were just making. And underneath that would be objective unfunded liability, right? That would be part of that, attracting business would be part of that, but it would be your economic goal. And that would keep your goals to five, you'd have five goals. See nods around the table?
I like that.
And what that does, and what it does do, I should also say, one piece that's not in there is to hold on to or change this one, but this diversity, inclusion, and you wanted to add equity.
Yeah, so yeah, that was the fourth, fourth one you had here, so, yeah.
Because that would, remember, that was another big consensus point, that it's important that that becomes a strategic goal. So let's see, that gives us, if we have Goal One, Two, Three, Four, Five, Six, that'd be six goals. And we can, I'm real anxious to hear your thoughts on that. The one thing that I'll say there is that Goal Objective Four under Goal One has gone away, and that's public, that's public safety. And so that's a tricky one to let go. I'm assuming of both councils that kind of rises to the surface, so maybe we can talk about that. Is your thoughts here on those goals? Go ahead.
Well, yeah, that does raise a question I've had, which is, it's particularly heightened now because we've just adopted or approved, at least a draft, the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan? Is that what it's called? I can't remember. And the housing element, and those commit the city to a whole host of things on specific timelines. And so I've wondered, you know, should each of those be embedded in the strategic plan? Because those are priority items that we have already said are priority items or we've already committed to in some fashion. And I haven't gone through and, you know, made my own index from each of those. But I'm just concerned if we do this independent from looking at those, then, you know, we've got this whole set of things that we're saying staff should do, but we've already adopted a whole set of things that staff should do and we're not taking a holistic view on it. And it, what triggered me to think of that was your recognizing that that particular objective would go away while that's in the LHRP. So in some sense, you know, you can have an incentive to say, oh, well, that's covered over there, so we don't need to include it here.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's work that would have to be done. So if we don't include it here, it's kind of a cheat.
And, and would that be important for the council to have public safety as a strategic goal? Would that be, or could you say we're okay on public safety for the next year or two? Because we know it's all getting done, but it's below the waterline. It's not, it hasn't risen to the level, as you say, it's in process, staff's got a direction, they're working on it, it's just part of the day to day work. And so that would be another question out in front of you.
Right, well, I guess I would ask, and I don't think it was in the last strategic plan, to the point of things that were accomplished that weren't in there, the passage of Measure K to increase the size of the fire department in order to sort of meet median, the median staffing for our population size. So I don't know if there's things like that that are out there that should be in here, because that, I got educated to that fairly early in my tenure. But I didn't think to put it in the strategic plan, and I wasn't raised by anybody else to put in the strategic plan. And yet I know it became the focus of hundreds of hours of my work. So for my own benefit, I'd like to see it in the strategic plan if it's something I'm gonna work on. And so, yeah, I don't, I don't have a good feel for that. The one item I can think of that, that I am focused on, but I was gonna try to fit it in under the Parks Goal was identifying resiliency hubs. So that's part of the Parks Master Plan. And so since it was in the Parks Master Plan and it has a nexus with parks, parks not, may, may not be the only place or may not be the right place, but it is in that plan. So I was gonna fit it under that goal. I don't know what staff thinks of that. But since, you know, in some ways, it seems to me a little bit of a cheat, but it was in the Parks Master Plan, so, you know, I don't know.
Okay, very good.
So on, on splitting up Goal One, I think that makes sense. This last time we did this, we spent something like, what felt like half the meeting talking about Goal One, because it's got so much of what a city does in there. So I think that makes sense. I think for what we have now is Goal Six, the one for economic development and unfunded liabilities. I would rather, economic development and increasing our revenues.
I would rather, economic development and increasing our revenue, to me, are quite different. And I would, you know, I think we can expand our number of goals, provided we're not also expanding everything else underneath them. If we had seven goals and they're all as long as what they were previously, that's bad. If we have seven goals and they're all shorter than what we had previously, I've seen Nicole nodding, so if that works for staff too, then I think that works for me. And I would make the revenue one more general, as to me, it would be, we want to increase revenue by increasing our general fund to meet our unfunded liability. That would, that would then be in the objectives area, especially because I think we just need to increase our revenue for many reasons, including that, also on staff, also on, like you said, we, we have previously not had fully, fully staffed cities. The goal is to have that, so to pay for that, we would need to increase revenue, because we constantly budget for not having that essentially. So I'd make that a little more general.
Okay, very good. Go ahead.
Yeah, this goes to something I wondered about is, now, previously, the strategic plan has been a three-level hierarchy. I don't know where that architecture comes from. I appreciate that we're collapsing one level, and maybe this is an opportunity to collapse two levels and have goals that will be met by blah, 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 blah. I don't know. Because if you have a hierarchy like this, then, at least my mind goes to, well, if you're going to have that hierarchy, then you have to have two objectives under the goal. And so then you get sort of pushed into this artificial, all right, well, I'm going to have at least two objectives per goal, we've got seven goals, so we're going to have 14 objectives, that's like, well, we had 15 now, I was hoping we could constrain it a little bit. So another, another possibility, I don't know, those with institutional memory might be able to speak to why the three-level, where the three-level hierarchy came from, or what the organizational development thinking is.
In terms of the, in terms of the goals, objectives, and work plan items, yeah.
Like, is that sort of standard in organizational development?
It's very, it's very standard.
And do, does anybody know why it's standard? I mean, I'm a scientist, I'm always questioning.
I'm not sure. I just know that it is a very conventional way of doing it. And again, the, usually staff takes ownership of the work plan items, right? And then council, or whatever the governing body is, takes charge of the goals and objectives.
Yeah.
Well, let me just go back and ask, I have not heard a lot about open space in parks. So you've got a standalone goal, right? Maximize open space in parks, and you did mention that in your pre-workshop survey. But does that still belong as a strategic goal? And I'm just asking the question. Or does that move below the waterline? Is there enough work in there and enough interest to signal, this is really a high-priority item for, for the next year or two?
I know that in talking with some of our sports leagues and stuff, is that, you know, they're, they're generally struggling to meet their required playtimes for, and trying to fit their schedules into what's available. I don't, I mean, maximize and improve parks and open space, I mean, I feel like we need to figure out ways to increase our park space, specifically for youth sports, or other, I mean, even other community-based sports. But I know from past experience, being in Little League, and having so many teams and trying to fit them all in, because, you know, you have requirements from the league that you have to play so many games, and when it rains out, and stuff like that, it can be really challenging. And so that part I see as important, but I don't know if it necessarily needs to be here. I think that this is maybe something, like you said, more kind of under the waterline. And maybe I'd like to hear from, from staff as well, where you think, where you think we are at that, at that goal, maximizing, improving parks and open space. And because I know that the Parks has been very on top of things and gotten a lot accomplished, I believe.
Do you want, okay.
Yeah, sure. Yes, as you know, it's, it's a puzzle for us to schedule all of the Little Leagues onto the two fields that we have. And then when you take in the rains that we've had, it's been quite a challenge to meet everybody's goals for playing and for games. But, you know, we do what we can with the space that we have. In talking about increasing park space, the, the one park that is underdeveloped right now is Pier Street Park, and it is in the Parks Master Plan to do, to create a process with the community and the council to figure out what is needed and what could, how this park could be developed in the, in the future. I'm not sure that it is in the process for the, over the next two years. We do have plans for doing the Prop 68 projects in each of the parks over the next year. Potentially could be something we look at in year two, but it is on our radar as far as, you know, the need to provide to, that we do have an underdeveloped park, and that, you know, it is, would be one of the priorities that we could look at in the, maybe the second year, the second year of the plan. And of course, with that comes the funding piece that we would have to look at as well.
So it sounds like it probably doesn't need to be here.
Right, it's.
Yeah, well, you know, to add to that, I'm looking, I'm looking at all of these objectives, and I'm realizing that we have a plan for all of them. We have a climate action plan, we have the housing element, we have the ATP, or the creation of a new ATP. We have the hazard mitigation plan, as well as our emergency operations plan. We have the parks and open space mass management plan.
Parks, recreation, and open space.
We have the economic development strategic plan, a bit dated, and we also have our budget, which is our financial policy document, as well as our audit. So we, we really have the implementation expressed and prioritized in all of those plans that the council reviews and adopts, or receives, in one way or another. So going back to Preston's point, Councilmember Jordan's point about maybe we structure this even more concentrated, I think we have the action-oriented elements already burst through the council in policy adoption level. And there may be some prioritization within each of those, and that would be something that we integrate at the staff level. And you see all of those as they go down the assembly line back and forth and through your advisory bodies. So I'm seeing that lineup potentially pretty well.
Yeah, I think, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, I think in particular, if we circle back just to parks, I think, given how new the Parks Master Plan is, and there are a whole series and number of things to implement there, that it seems to me, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to a goal specifically about parks being removed. And I could see the identify resiliency, while you offered it specifically about the parks, I would offer that I'd, I'd really love to see increased public health and safety actually kept as a goal, because I believe that, that that can fit under that as a specific objective. And whether that's more broadly termed as opportunities, so it's not necessarily just the parks, but the parks are part of that conversation, I think would make sense. I think one of the things that has been a little bit, I keep feeling like I'm playing catch-up, right? Is the number of plans, and this was mentioned earlier, the number of plans we have that already lay out things that, in some cases, we absolutely have to do as a community. So our housing element has very stringent things that have to get done, really in the next two years. Yes, it might have to be technically completed by 2025, but that really means we need to be making big progress on them. And so I'm trying to get up to speed on like, well, I know the housing element, because that, I literally, you know, voted on that one, but I don't know the details of the, of the parks plan. The art, the arts master plan is from 2016, so, you know, and one of the last objectives was update that. And I noted that we've made improvements in the arts, but that doesn't look like we've actually taken the step of updating that plan. And I'm not offering that that's necessarily something we, as a council, have to prioritize in the next two years, given how much we have on our plate already, or the staff has on their plate. But just recognize that, I don't know if you did this last year, but like, I don't have a full sense of all the things we've committed to in all of our different plans. And having worked on the active transportation plan when that was first passed, and understanding there are still things on that from the original draft, let alone the 2014 draft, that are still, like, this should be done, but hasn't been done. Like, I don't know how many of those are out there. And I, this is not a reflection on council or on staff, but we had an issue that happened during the election, and it was explicitly called out in a resolution that this shall be studied and shall be implemented. It was not. And so council made a very quick decision about, what do we do in this situation in terms of an election? That's what worries me a little bit, is that I don't have a sense of what are all the things we have committed, staff has either committed to doing, or we have asked staff to commit to doing, and understand, are we missing something? Because what was missed was pretty important. And so I don't, you know, I don't, I don't know, I'm not, not sure what to do with that. I, I like the idea of switching the goals and moving the goal one into smaller parts, and just saying, let's not have seven items under each of these, because that's not going to help any of us. I appreciate what the previous council did in whittling that down to 40 items. I'm hoping we can get it down smaller, because the 40 items, whatever items we list here are on top of what we've already asked, we've already committed staff to do. So I guess that's where, all right, I've been holding for a little, back a little bit for a little while here, but that's where my concern is. I want to make sure that we're really focused, because what we're, I'm, I'm a little confused as to whether what we're telling staff today is, hey, here are new things we want you to add on to your plate, versus just do everything the housing element said, right? Because I think one of the things I learned during the campaign was this idea of resiliency, like, what happens in a major fire? What happens after a major earthquake? Where are we going to be? Can we really rely on one center? Is that really equitable, that we only have one center that we're dependent on? And so to me, that, like, that is absolutely a priority for me to get the ball rolling, because this is not something we're going to figure out in a year. It's not something we're going to figure out maybe in the time of this plan, but it needs, the ball needs to start rolling. But I have to weigh that with, well, if we have to do the housing element, which is bear near and dear to me, which had a lot of things that touch lots of parts of the city, if we had to do the active transportation plan, which I'm glad to see that it's still moving forward, because I was a little worried it was going to get put off, given all the other things we've committed ourselves to do. I'm trying to prioritize, well, wait a minute, can the resiliency wait and see, do we have an opening next year when we think about the strategic plan, because we've gotten so much done? Or is that something that happens in the second half of my, hopefully, all four years of my term? Because I, I, I mentioned this many times, I would love to be able to be a one, one-term council member if all the things that I wanted to get done, the ball is rolling. I also recognize, as was mentioned, these things take a time, take time, so, you know, I'm not committing that I'm a one-term councilman.
Maybe, maybe if, well, because as you were mentioning, Nicole, is, is some of the items that were left on the work plan were either because they were stale, or, you know, just not capable of being done, or maybe the timing wasn't right for them. Could we ask staff to go through them and give us kind of a report consensus on, you know, okay, well, no, this one didn't get done because it's not feasible for us to do? Or, I mean, I'd like to hear that feedback. I think oftentimes, from what I've seen, is that, you know, council goes direction, and staff just says, okay, we're going to figure out how to do it. But I want to hear a realistic, objective voice from staff as well, so that we have that good partnership and say, okay, let's look at these realistically. This is not, so let's take those items off, and let's really focus in on the things that we can get done, and things that we can do well, rather than, you know, be all out here in the weeds of something that's never going to come to fruition, or that it's too stale and dated, that it doesn't make sense anymore. Or that there's a better timing for it coming in the future because of a, you know, certain bill that's going to be passed, or a certain legislation that's coming in. So that, I'd really like to take a step back and look at it from that perspective.
And what I'm seeing in the status update here is what's been accomplished, but not the stale items. You didn't call out the stale items, and I love the term stale items. Kind of, you know, moldy bread a little bit, right? So, but, and, and so what I'm hearing is, you're giving staff, hey, take those ones off, let us know, right? Keep us updated, but take those ones off the list. They're not workable, they're stale, they're not achievable, for, you know, whatever the reason is, and take those off the list. Did I also hear you say, Nicole, that you have plans for most of these goals, and that the objectives underneath that might be implement the active transportation plan, ensuring that all the items get completed? Something like that becomes the objective underneath that, and what that is, to the point, that's not giving you new work to do. That's not new work. That is focusing staff on targeted things that you think are important, and getting rid of clutter, right? The extraneous items that are not moving these goals forward. And did I also hear that the increase parks and open space, that that becomes, that changes to something like public health, safety, and resiliency? Did I hear that, or was I imagining that?
So I was, I was offering, given the commentary about the Parks Master Plan and the continuous implementation of that, that as a goal that we didn't necessarily, I was recommending we move the, I think it was increase resiliency through studying our parks, move that under public health and safety.
Okay, and have, and have a public health and safety standalone goal, okay? That does move us to eight now.
Well, I mean, I would just like to say that we have a Parks Master Plan, staff will be working on implementing it. If we don't recognize that in the strategic plan, then I see that as kind of a cheat, because it's stuff they're going to be doing that is beyond the sort of standard below, below the waterline. And so my desire is to include all those things in the strategic plan, so that they're recognized when they're done, and so that we recognize that they're on the docket. Now, I suspect that if you put together all these plans and all the commensurate, it's way beyond what staff can actually do. And I brought this up with the LH, Local Hazard Mitigation Plan, that, you know, it committed to adopting a mandatory statutory retrofit ordinance in 2018, 19. Well, it still hasn't been done. So to me, that's the role of the council, is there's all these plans, there's more to do than can be done, and it's up to us to choose a tractable set to start working on. And so I, what would help me would be if staff went through all of these plans and listed all the stuff that's supposed to happen in the next two years, and then we looked at that and said, either, one, you know, that's more than can be done, so we either choose the things out of that set that we think should start, and we can't choose anything else, or we choose an even smaller set and add some things to it. But, but otherwise, we're just not being realistic, we're not doing our job. And to say, we've adopted two of these things in the last three months, which had, you know, a massive, has been recognized, a massive number of, of items that staff is supposed to do. So that's suggesting that, that we ask staff to come back with something. And then it would also be good to hear from staff if they think that's a reasonable thing to come back with.
And this would be an update on all the plans that are currently in play?
Yeah, all the plans that are in force, go through each of them, list out those things that, that were committed to, or had at least a tentative timeline to be done by 2025, whether they were supposed to be done in 2018 or whatever. List all those things so that we have a full menu of what it is that the city has committed to in some sense. And then that would give us, as I say, we could either, you know, pick 30 items from that, or we could pick 20 items from that and 10 new items or something, but, but that would at least, I think, provide some more coherent direction and recognition of what staff is already probably working on to some extent, on what, what we, as a council, speaking institutionally over the long term, naturally, these individuals sitting here have committed to by voting to adopt the. naturally, these individuals sitting here have committed to by voting to adopt those plans. You know, that, that is an action that we took, and we need to stand behind that.
And is that in addition to the strategic goals and objectives, or that gets folded into?
No, that, that would inform, so that, that, we would use that as part of the selection step for what, what goes in the strategic plan.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, I got the mandatory soft story seismic retrofit ordinance adopted in the strategic plan two sessions ago, before I was on calendar, advocated for it, and it was adopted in there. And that's just one item out of the local hazard mitigation plan. But I felt that, no surprise as a geologist, I thought that was important. And, and so that's sort of a model, I see. It's like, there's way more than can be done, so it's up to council to decide, you know, which are the things that, that should go first. And so without having that menu that we've already adopted in front of us in a coherent fashion, then we can, like I say, we can cheat by creating a bunch of new things and ignoring all that other stuff. And then staff is left like, well, we got these plans, you already committed to this, and that, and this. And another advantage of that, to me, is, you know, that the one person whose performance review we review is the city manager. And I basically use progress in the strategic plan as a, as a performance metric. And so if staff has been asked to do a bunch of things via adopting these plans, you know, randomly through time, and that's not in the strategic plan, and staff accomplishes that, then that makes that metric does not work as well.
Yeah, I, I completely understand the interest in having, you know, some things synthesized on each of our plans. And I see how helpful it could be. I also see how much work it may be for staff, seeing that the majority of the plans are in the community development department. So we would basically be asking staff for their implementation plans for each of these plans. Which is a roundabout way of saying, tell us that this, this area is your ongoing priority, council, because you are representing your constituency, and that's what you've heard from the community. We have the plan, and as we're implementing it, we will present it to you. We will also track our status over time. We, we have some ideas on, on more active tracking of each of our accomplishments in the next iteration of your plan. I fear that us going through and synthesizing, and then asking for another sequential prioritization of each of those plans, will have some unintended consequences. Because they can be cross-departmental, they can be tied to the CIP, they can be tied to outside funding, they can be tied to a number of things that we might not be able to simplify in a, in a basic submental back. And I'm also concerned that would be extremely time-consuming.
Yeah.
But I think that there are ways that we could accomplish it in a, in a related fashion that would still meet that interest. And we can work through the department heads to figure that out a little bit more as we understand and qualify and refresh our potentially just goals in terms of how we envision accomplishing them over the next point in time. And hopefully, that will do the same thing that's being sought, as long as the council is being, you know, expressing specifically what it means to achieve these goals.
Also, just another question is like, in basing it off of that idea, if there's certain things or goals, objectives, that, or, you know, just actual functioning items that come up, and staff sees that there's a challenge, and say, well, in order for us to accomplish X, Y, Z, we need a council's direction on, or something to happen, or some sort of, anything to change in order to create that? Is that, do we ever get feedback or reflection from staff in order to say, like, okay, we, we could do this, but here's where we're up against a wall, or something like that? And how do we, how do we manage that challenge?
Yes, absolutely. And, and that comes in a variety of iterations. I think one thing that we're trying to use more frequently, that you've seen recently, is study sessions, to get that high-level direction on the onset versus the output. But if, something that we haven't done well over the years, and I will be completely upfront, is, okay, there's this new thing. What are we not going to do, so we can accomplish this new thing? And we've never been able to line everything up and, and just kind of unassemble one, and then put it on hold necessarily. I mean, it sort of happens organically from time to time. Some things will be put on hold because one thing comes up that is intense and timely. But, you know, a new initiative comes in, and the immediate interest is, okay, well, here's the resources assigned to do that, but what are you not going to do? And that's a real unanswerable question, in my opinion. Yeah. We're going to add?
Well, I think, as Nicole mentioned, you know, we will do, we will increase our tracking strategies for the council's strategic plan. And I think that may help also to clarify how the goals are supported. We plan on having a live webpage, you know, on the city website, with each of your goals that you establish. And every time that there is something that comes before council in the form of a staff report, study session, an action, we would, you know, put that information on that website and, and under the goals that it, that it supports. So that will help over the long term, you know, to see what staff is doing, the, and the decisions that council are taking to be able to see how the strategic plan is moving forward. And of course, there's going to be some check-in on the strategic plan, you know, progress. And another piece that we're also looking at is actually branding the strategic plan and creating some images, so that, that we could place on the header of staff reports. So that if, for someone who doesn't really want to read the entire staff report, they can read the summary, the, the title, and say, oh, yes, oh, it has that logo. That means that it's supporting the strategic plan. This item is, is supporting it. So just trying to make it more fluid, more accessible, and, and ongoing.
And I think integrated, really in the day-to-day.
Yes.
We have all of this to do. Let's make sure it's visible and relevant, and in a, in a, somewhere that you can really track over time, wow, these actually are being accomplished based on the goal levels that the council has set out.
Yeah, kind of, I think we talked about it a little bit before, kind of like how Public Works will get a, you know, an item in, and they're tracking through their software of, you know, kind of like a call ticket in a help center or something like that. Just to be able to track and manage that ticket along the way, to make sure it's actually gotten taken care of and, and satisfied, so.
So if I, if I'm tracking here, so you would have your strategic goals, and underneath the strategic goals, the objectives would be implementing the plans that have already been developed, your economic development plan, parks master plan, et cetera. And that council would get the update that Councilmember Jordan is asking for, because you'll have developed work plans around those. And then those get shared with council, and then council can see where progress is being made, where it stalled out, forward motion, not forward motion. And that would give council the update in terms of where implementation is around the, around the plans. So if we went in that direction, then I think a task in front of council is, eight strategic goals, sounds like a lot, but is that, is there a way to winnow that down? Is eight strategic goals, is that achievable, doable, from staff's perspective? Given that several of the objectives underneath are going to be items that are already in play?
I think a lot of this relates to what we're viewing the plan as for, which I think we're, we're all talking about several of the different purposes that are very interrelated, that we've used this word previously. As one of them is this tracking of, I think it would be very useful, like Councilmember Jordan was saying, of, you know, if we had the first goal for each of the, the first objective for each of these goals is implementing the plan. And this was something I worried about that I had mentioned to you, Nicole, of, you know, I think this is a good change to make for our specific plan, or to our strategic plan. But summarizing this in the new format may be more difficult for staff, because it makes it more of a, there has to be more narrative to it, there has to be more work going into summarizing all that. I think there's a way to thread that needle to make a short summary of sort of, what have we done on this, on this, you know, on our housing element, on our, you know, whatever core plan we have this year? What's a very brief of, you know, what could be coming up that's in there already? But I think that all speaks to, one of the, the purposes of this is tracking what we're doing. Another that's very related with putting these plans in there is putting in the big important stuff. But one of the ones that we're sort of skirting around is that this has also been used often to add in stuff that doesn't fit neatly into any of the plans that already exist. Of, this is an extra thing, we are using the strategic planning process to sort of, kind of informally poll the council about, like, is there interest in staff developing this and getting it, the ball rolling on it? Which is very useful, I think, to council sometimes, because it allows us to have these sort of free-form discussions where we can discuss things that's hard to agendize. But those then become very hard to implement on the staff side, because we're not giving actually that much direction. We're just saying like, well, we have general interest in this thing. So I think if we want to maintain any of that, it would behoove us to follow the approach that Nicole mentioned, which I think is a very good one, of trying to focus more on study sessions. And I think we could get as specific as saying, well, in, in support of this goal, we should hold a study session on X, Y, or Z topic. Which gives us a very implementable thing, and another opportunity to then have a real direction from council to staff about that thing that's more than just, we'd like to explore a dispensary. That's not really that helpful, even though it is something that, you know, it's good to have council discussion on, just like it was when we put it on there last time. Because it wasn't clear that all the council supported that, and so we had to have a discussion on it. So I, I think all of what we're getting at is doable, it's just a balancing act of all of those things.
So if I, if I could ask, because I'm, I'm not comfortable with the, well, a couple of things. One, I think this is tractable if we get rid of objectives. And then we just have the by-statement after these goals, because there's only eight of them. I'm not comfortable with having the by-statement be, you know, by implementing such-and-such plan, by employing the parks master plan. Because I think there's way more in there than can be implemented in two years. So I think it's incumbent on us to choose. Now, maybe that choice happens in the study session, which is an interesting suggestion. Now, to some extent, there are already priorities that have been adopted in some of these. But I suspect even with that prioritization, there's more than can be done in a certain timeframe. And I go back to the local hazard mitigation plan. I mean, we have evidence that there was more than could be done, because it wasn't done on the timeframe that was given. So I still think it's incumbent on the council to provide that direction. And maybe that could happen during a study session, in which case the goal could be, you know, this is the goal, by implementing the plan as directed during a study session or something, or as prioritized during a study session. But short of that, I think that, that the council needs to review the plans at least, and see if the sum of what's going on in all the plans, and I guess, going back to the city manager, yeah, I'm a little confused about the, the representation of the large amount of work. Because when I look at the local hazard mitigation plan, it has a very clear table. And the table has, you know, timeline set. So to me, it would just be, if I was going to do it, I would just go in and pull those ones that say they're going to be done over the next two years. I would do that for every plan, build the table in Excel, and, and, and I may do that. If staff doesn't want to do that, it probably will do it.
No, no, let me be clear. It's not that staff does not want to do that. It's the circles around those plans that aren't explicit in the plan. Where is the advisory body prioritization? Where is the community prioritization? Where is the county prioritization? Where is the funding prioritization? What staff person is available now to implement this myriad of projects? Oh, this aligns nicely with this project over in this department. Oh, we shouldn't do this yet, because we know this is coming, so we should wait until something else occurs. So it's, it's that iterative that, sure, looking at a printed plan without any consideration of what's going on around it, straightforward task. It's the complexity and the layers to it. And let me be clear, that these plans are not our core, necessarily our core services. So it's also ingraining that into, okay, it says in the next two years, what does that really mean, knowing that we have an entirely separate and intensive workload, turnover, resource limitation, and unexpected situations? So that's where I don't see the direct value in submitting, you know, basically a task list of implementation of these plans. I think you would find much more effectiveness in your department head saying, given everything that's going on in our department, this is what we expect that we can accomplish in the next two years, or X timeframe. And that's something that I am, I'm more than happy and excited to commit to. It's, it's just a bit of a tweak from the suggested approach. It takes into consideration everything in perspective.
I'd really be interested in seeing, like, from each section from staff going, hey, we're so close to, this is the right timing for, here's what we recommend, here's what we know we could get done. And really hearing back from staff on those items, so that we have a bigger picture as far as what is realistic on that side, and not us just saying, oh, yeah, that looks like it, it seems most important to us. But we don't know what the actual other side is like. Oh, no, we don't have funding for this until spring of blah, blah, blah. You know, or this is going to, you know, like you said, it's going to tie into this, or tie into that. So I think it would really be beneficial to council for us to get that feedback and get that insight, so.
And I think that's organic to the process, as Sean has initiated. I know we've gotten kind of lost in, in a few different iterations thereof, but, you know, as the council gives us their goals, staff then says, how are we going to accomplish these? And it is on us, absolutely, to document and demonstrate that in a way that is acceptable and accountable to the city council.
And I think things, when we, I like to use that take the path of least resistance kind of thing, like, when we know that there's certain things that can be easily accomplished or easily achieved, that still begins to continue to start to meet those other goals, that we actually get more accomplished, more off our plate, so we can really zero in and focus on the bigger, bigger items, the bigger tasks. Because we've already dealt with, you know, the low-hanging fruit, so to speak, you know.
Yes, and one more thought on this before it escapes me. And sorry for interjecting this, but as the mayor was indicating, one more addition to your study session, something that I've seen very effective in the recent months is your ad hoc groups. So that doesn't mean that everything on the strategic plan is council-staff. Staff does it, council doesn't touch it. No, not at all. It means there's probably a whole nother bubble of work and opportunities at the regional level, at the policy level, at the agency-to-agency level, that would be highly beneficial from council engagement in ad hoc ways. Ad hoc ways, as you have recently with the school district, you know, with the racial equity survey. A lot of different items that I have in my brain that I think would really benefit from that perspective and expertise.
I, I think it would be helpful to separate updating council from developing the goals. And I think you do need to have council, you do need to have staff updating you and letting you know where things are at. But at this point, as you think about it, and just leaving the updating off to the side, what are the really critical goals for Albany for the next year? What do you want, what are you hearing from your constituents? What do you see in the community? What is your vision for the community in the next year? In terms of, these are the items that we, we want press to cover, we want the community to know that this is what the council says is- to know that this is what the council says is critically important over the next year? And, and if you, if you can come to some agreement about what those three, four, six items are, then staff can take that and say, okay, here's what we need to do in order to get that. Um, yes, implement the Parks Master Plan, but there might be other items underneath there too that you want to see accomplished, not just the implementation of, of the Parks Master Plan. So you'd have a couple of different objectives underneath, underneath each one of those goals. Is, so let me just, let me just ask, um, I think Anne's got us all squared away here. Is this a goal for the next year, advanced climate action and adaptation? Is that a goal? Do you want to tell the community, council says this rises to the, this is above the water line?
Yes.
And, uh, what would, what do you want to see accomplished over the next?
Yes, that's the thing is it's not just implement the cap because that's too, you know, that's too big a thing. And, uh, if we say that, then staff is again in a situation of picking and choosing what to do because we're not providing that direction.
And what, what would you like to see in addition to the, to the cap? What would you like to see accomplished?
I would like to see looking for opportunities to, um, you know, everything's moving and changing so quickly. So if there's something that's coming along the pipeline, um, looking for, for opportunities to implement, uh, things in order to advance the climate action and adaptation plan.
I'm thinking about things like, um, that are in the current objectives around gas, appliances, that kind of thing, right? Those are the opportunities to reduce climate action. I'm not sure if that's in your cap or not, but those would be the kinds of opportunities you would want staff to explore. Opportunities to reduce, uh, global warming.
Yeah. And opportunities to, to fund them as well, you know, like finding, you know, if there's any grants or, you know, again, the income piece of, or the revenue side of things.
Anything else come to mind under climate?
Um, well, a direction that the last council provided, and that's a priority for me, is the city staff is developing a pilot to, um, support electrification of existing buildings that will prune natural gas distribution system. So sort of picking certain blocks that are at the end of the gas distribution network and then targeting those for electrification.
Anything else jump out at you?
Um, I'd love for us, sorry, Mike, uh, to exploration of EV charging in public facilities and public right of ways.
Okay. Anything else? Those are, those sound to me like objectives. They're, they're good objectives. They seem at the right level. Nicole, what do you think?
Mm-hmm. Um, the way they're framed is helpful, exploration versus implementation, because there's things that need to be considered and figured out. So, um, yeah, I think that those, those shape well. Um, you know, I'm, I'm doing this as you're talking and looking at the synthesized version, which may be helpful as you're going through to balance, as Councilmember Jordan said, you know, what was in it last time and, and what reflects in this version.
Um, it sounds to me, uh, housing, uh, a lot of consensus here that that belongs on the list. Uh, so you've got, um, the housing element, obviously. What else would you like to see accomplished on housing? Vice Mayor, you had mentioned about, uh, exploring building codes, fire codes, as a possibility?
So one of the things I noted in the housing element is there's a lot of direction for the city to look at ways that allow housing to happen. Uh, there was very little direction in the housing element, which I think is completely appropriate not to be in the housing element, uh, for the city to encourage. And so there's a very distinct difference there. Zoning can, you can allow a lot of things. Um, but by changing building code or looking at fee structures, there are ways to, uh, really make it, uh, encourage more, more housing development. So.
And that seems to me to be, you know, in addition to the housing element, that seems to me, what I'm hearing from you all is that's the key item there, increase, um, housing stock. And I'm hearing that across the board from below market, um, workforce housing, all, all types of different housing, if I'm hearing that correctly.
Yeah. And, and I'll just add my, my main drive for this is San Pablo Avenue specific plan, we're going to get housing, right? As long as interest rates don't go any higher. But I think one of the things that's been identified both in the housing element and various different situations is that is placing all the housing in one part of our community. And, and, um, research and work that I, that I've seen shows that for us to get housing across the entire communities, we really do need to look at, uh, other tools that are going to help us, not just saying, well, the zoning allows it. Uh, so that's, that's where I'm coming from is that it's that equity question that if, if all we do is change the zoning, that doesn't mean you're going to get housing. Uh, and that just means on paper, we're saying, well, we're an equitable city. But it's not actually causing change. So.
In that same vein, um, for me, I'd be going to be encouraging housing development by funding it, uh, develop and fund affordable housing especially. Um, and then, like you mentioned, we did the San Pablo specific plan. I'd love to do a Solano specific plan so that we are undergoing the same process for other major thoroughfare to spread housing farther around the city. Um, and then the, the last thing for this section, which, uh, you know, I've gone back and forth of whether to put it in because as we were discussing earlier, it's sort of already prioritized in the housing element. We have several things mostly around tenant protections that are prioritized for the next year or two in the housing element, which we could put in here separately, or we can say we've already prioritized in the housing element. I'm not sure exactly which way. I know you'll say, well, cheating, we're cheating if we don't put them in.
Well, well, let's capture that. Even if you put housing element and in parentheses, uh, you know, pay particular attention to tenants' rights or something like that, and let's call that out. So staff knows that's a critical element from council on the housing element.
So then, in that same vein, um, adding in Solano Avenue specific plan was something that Mayor Tiedemann recommended, which is, I don't know if the housing element specifically calls it a Solano Avenue specific plan, but it does say Solano Avenue zoning at least.
It changes zoning. It does not do a specific plan. I asked Jeff to make sure, are we basically doing one? And the answer is no. So this would be an example of something we are adding on top of that doesn't quite fit into our existing plan.
And I think as Barry told us, we can do more than what the housing element says. So doing a specific plan instead of just the zoning is more.
Nicole, any thoughts here on these objectives?
I think those are great. And I appreciate calling out the tenants' rights because what that does is if you're not versed in the housing element, but you're scanning a very visual, you know, easy to read document, you see that as an expressed priority in more than one place. I think that's, it's not repetitive. It's helpful.
And I would, I would just like to add into that maybe as like, rather than just saying tenants', landlord's rights and responsibilities, I'd like to see it say something along the lines of, um, developing further education about tenant landlord rights and responsibilities so that we can really bring that education piece to our community and have some actual, um, you know, um, what am I trying to say? Um, really key identifiable people who, um, can answer lots of questions, be, you know, a resource for us so that every, every piece of the community can really understand what these things mean. Because I think that there's a lot of confusion and misinformation about.
Councilmember, Councilmember, can I offer?
Yeah.
A interpretation of what I'm hearing? Because I'm going to be careful that I'm not actually talking about, I'm reinterpreting what you said as opposed to saying what I, because I'm not allowed to talk about tenant rights. But what, what I'm hearing, because this is a conversation that we do a lot in, in our work, is you want to raise the bar in the discussion so that everyone has the same understanding. When someone uses a term, we are all intending that this term means this, that there's a common vocabulary. Otherwise, what I have often found is people will be fighting over a term when they actually mean the same thing, or they'll be fighting about two different terms that actually they mean the same thing, just each of them have a different understanding of what that means. So that's what I heard you say, just as a, it's, it's the opportunity to kind of build a common vocabulary and raise the bar on the conversation.
Well, and also just making sure that we're having, um, professionals who, who give us the subject matter, who, who feed us the information appropriately and correctly and that it's not something that's, oh, I think that this is what this means, but they don't necessarily, yeah.
And, and so your community members know what their rights are?
Exactly.
And how to access those and how, and, and where to go to actually exercise the, the rights that they have. So there is the education piece in there. Very good.
Can I make a suggestion, which is Anne, I think seems to be already kind of doing this or to some extent of, we could have each of these plans as, you know, implement by implementing the housing element. But right now, that's not in the bullet point list, which I think could actually work well of, we're not putting it in the list with all these other things of saying, we're going to implement the housing element and do all these other more specific things of, we can say, this is our goal. This goal for the city of Albany is largely governed by this plan. Here's a link to that plan in the document, wherever you're finding this online. And in our updates, have some short, manageable for staff update on what's happening with that plan. And then separately have these objectives of, we're saying by doing this, 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 and this, some of which is already in that plan. So we're sort of, we're not putting those plans in line with everything else. We're, but we're keeping them in this strategic plan document.
Yes.
Sort of off to the side a little bit.
No, makes total sense. That's good. Um, anything else under housing?
Yeah, repeal measure D.
Is that the one for the hell?
No, no, that's measure K. Measure D is, um, uh, the parking component was repealed in 2016, but it still has a require, a pretty onerous requirement for changing R1 zoning. Um, so.
And from an equity standpoint, it's actually not even R1 in the entire city. It's R1 in a portion of the city.
Right, right. Yeah, it's R1 between, the portion between San Pablo and Masonic, is that understanding? Yeah.
Um, is this something that is on staff's work plan?
I mean, it would be on staff's and council. Yeah, it would be on staff. Well, I don't know if it's part of the housing element, but it would be.
It is called out in the housing element.
Okay, okay. Very good. Um, if we could scroll up on, uh, transportation, so you've got your active transportation plan, your roadway safety plan. Anything else go underneath that? And, um, council member, streets, right? Improve.
Just streets, just streets.
So, um, I mean, it, I would say the active transportation plan needs to be updated at this point. I think it's mostly implemented. Um, so it's really updating the ATP. Um, some other items I had there were, um, uh, do a, uh, does it matter, equity matter, do a motorist speed and volume survey on as many streets in the city as we can do? Because right now, traffic calming is complaint driven. And some blocks have more institutional knowledge to complain and how to complain effectively than others. Um, and so I think the next step we need to take there rather than traffic calming in response to complaint is traffic calming in response to objective data collection.
Okay. So I think traffic calming is the key thing. Um,
Objective traffic calming.
Yeah, call, traffic calming, and then whether that's a survey or explore, um, alternatives or expanding traffic calming, getting feedback on traffic calming.
See, in some areas, I'd like to see less traffic calming and more traffic speeding upping because it's taking forever to get across town these days. I'm telling you.
Okay.
It takes me almost a half an hour to get to the middle school now. It's like bananas.
And do we have a streets objectives here? Just in terms of improving streets, your pavement index?
Yeah, I mean.
Do we have a paving index? Is that?
Well, I mean, that's, I, that's not here currently. Uh, I mean, that's, I would consider that below the water line.
Well, the only thing is.
If it's, if it's part of public's works, right, everyday work.
Hundred percent, yes.
Yeah, a hundred percent. So where's the traffic calming? And I would like to see the word, you know, collect data, objective data, uh, because survey could mean, survey people, get feedback from people. And that's what I'm trying to get away from. Um, and.
Objective data on traffic.
Yeah. Um, and I mean, this could either be under adaptation or, or here, um, city to, uh, I don't know how to phrase this, but the city to take over tree maintenance in the way that it has taken over sidewalk maintenance, which is to say it is not legally liable, but it is doing it, um, as well as increased tree canopy. So that could be either there or it could be an either or goal. It serves both. Um, I mean, study shows that the more street trees there are, the more people choose to walk. So, which obviously helps the climate. So it's, how do you, how do you pick which goal is under? I don't know.
I think, I think there are going to be situations where a lot of these things.
Yeah. And if you just flip a coin, I think there, um, I'm, I'm assuming that's going to fall to the same department.
Yeah. Well, yes and no. A little bit of both.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm curious, does that study, do people walk more because they're afraid to park their car under the tree because it's going to fall on it? Or I'm just kidding.
A whole new problem.
You're right. That study was done 10 years ago, so not under our current requirements.
We're so worried about trees catching on fire, right, during the drought and elements, about too much water and trees coming down.
Can we add a explore, um, uh, explore cost and funding sources for implementing traffic calming, uh, citywide? So I'm kind of taking a step beyond what you're mentioning, Councilmember Jordan, that, I mean, even if we didn't do the speed survey, the reality is we have, well, I don't think I've ever specifically asked staff of this, but I'm pretty sure if I asked staff, it would take us a decade to implement the traffic calming that we currently have at the funding rates that we currently set aside. I could be wrong on that, but.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's that many approved, that many speed humps approved.
But I, my big thing is just that we're going to do this speed survey. We're going to have a sense of where it's needed. We also, at the same time, need to understand how are we going to fund that? Because not all, not all of them are always going to be a speed hump. And we kind of have the sense of a speed, cost of fuel. I get that this has kind of been related with the ATP, but when last time we did the ATP, we didn't call out that every street has street calming or that every situation where we might need it. So.
That's why I wanted to call this goal Streets, to go beyond, go beyond calling it active transition.
This seems to me like a direct line to your transportation goal. It's an indirect line to me to climate change. There is a connection, but it's a dotted line.
Yeah.
But I mean, to, to his point, if you go to the, how the goal is described now, it doesn't really fit with the goal. Oh, I guess safety. I guess it could be safety. I mean, it's more qual, it's more quality of life than safety.
Yeah. Well, let's change the goal then.
Okay.
Right? Yeah. So what's a better description, description there? So it's promote active transportation and safety. That almost, active transportation almost seems like the opposite of tra, of traffic calming.
Could we, um, try promote streets that support active transportation, something, 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 something? Because right, that gets the streets in there, right? And then for saying promote streets that support, we can list a whole bunch of.
Support safety in active transportation?
Yeah.
So maybe safety comes first?
I've heard the term, um, transportation mobility. I've heard the term transportation mobility. We can get around easier.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
That works instead of active transportation? But I know you do have an active transportation plan.
Well, and I also want to make sure that we're very, you know, inclusive to everybody's types of modes of transportation or abilities.
Yeah, and that's, right, that's.
Yeah.
Cars, trucks, bicycles.
Wheelchairs.
Heads, right, the whole thing. Pedestrians, the whole thing.
That's why I had just improve streets.
Walkers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, what I do like about, whether it's transportation mobility or transportation mobility options, that's wordsmithing, but that allows us under a category like this. For instance, my discussion about EV chargers and in public facilities and right of ways, I mean, in theory, that could be down here, because it is more about the streets and providing mobility options. It also means, if we, as a council, want to, we can talk about transit under this goal. So I like that it broadens the goal. One of the things we are asking is specifically active transportation under that plan, so.
And in terms of where that goes, whether that goes here or under climate, it might be better, let staff work that out, because there's, you know, obviously workload implications for that, and then you start doubling up on one department and leaving another one unskated.
Well, and I don't know if this is in there. I mean, I know this is something that kind of was one of my pipe dreams for a while, and we talked on it with the economic development side piece, but just, you know, something I've always liked to see if we couldn't have happen is to some sort of shuttle, like the Emery Go- Round has. Something that connects our community from Pierce, you know, to the, you know, Bart stations, to the community center, to the, you know, Solano and San Pablo Avenue shops, so that it can continue to bring the revenue here back into the city, rather than maybe some of the people who are living on Pierce, who are shopping over at Ranch 99, and we're now losing our revenue income stream from those sales out to El Cerrito, so. And then also, it's able to connect the people that maybe do not have other options of transportation. Maybe they can't ride a bike. Maybe they can't, you know, get on a scooter. Maybe they can't walk more than a block, but now they have the ability to access other parts of our community.
Yeah, a lot of that's been looked at a number of times, and it's just financially infeasible.
Well, so the city of Emeryville does it by a property owner's bid with the.
With business.
The business, yeah.
But Emeryville has a huge business district.
I understand. I looked into the cost of some of the shuttles as well, when I was starting to do this, and there's actually, there is some options, and I believe that there's also some grant funding that may be available for this as well.
Nicole, any thoughts here on the transportation goal?
We're talking about two years of implementation. That's pretty substantive.
Yeah, I would not, I'm not in favor of going after funding sources on traffic calming in the next two years. I think we need to, just figuring out.
Sorry, my intent there was not for us to go after funding. It was to understand what are the costs and what opportunities are there for funding? So what kind of grants are out there? If, if, I am not wedded to that having to be in the goals for the next two years, but I will be bringing that back and raising that every opportunity, just because I had many conversations with residents who had traffic surveys done before the new council, before the council passed the newest opportunities, and staff is working with those communities to see if they qualify now. When it came to, well, when, when can I see this? I said, well, depends on where you rank on this list, and every time another street comes in that ranks higher than you, you will be bumped down on that list. Now, perhaps I was misstating things. So I'm looking at precedent and recognizing that I probably misstated some things. But my, my big concern there is just, we're making, we as a city are making these promises, and yet I don't know that our funding is necessarily keeping up with being able to implement these, so.
So the existing approved blocks were top of the list, so they were grandfathered in?
This is someone who didn't make it onto the list.
Okay, well, yeah, then they're.
And so now they're, now they're new in the queue, but I don't know what happens if they've got 12 speeders.
Right.
And they're on the list. Are they grandfathered at their spot, even if someone comes in later with 36 speeders? Or does a 36 beater bump them?
36 would take, and that's part of the reason that we need to do this objectively, so we don't have people in that situation. And I appreciate that you mentioned, you know, traffic calming can be more complicated than speed humps. If you go to that level, though, you're talking about doing a whole traffic management plan, which was done in 2000, and redoing that whole thing, which is a huge effort. Whereas my interest is just survey the local streets.
I am completely comfortable with starting with the low-hanging fruit.
Yeah, right.
I'm simply saying, if we can get, if we can explore what that really means when we do that survey, and then we understand what kind of funding we would need to find, so that we can limit all of that, and then do a traffic management plan, I'd be really excited.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be great sequencing.
That'll happen in my second term.
Yeah.
Well, if we go really fast, we could do a traffic management plan in my fourth year, and then I wouldn't have to.
Okay, so can we move on to Goal Four? Nicole, okay?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I just want to check. So Nicole, you raised a concern that that's a lot. And so, you know.
Well, and again, I'd like to, you know, I think that'd be good for them to come back and be like, no, no, forget it, we can't do that, or something, but.
Yeah. You know, maybe as you get to economic development, because the shuttle is pretty prescriptive as submitted for this, I, I think we either want to shape it around understanding our opportunities to improve transit services at large, which is another agency or agencies, or this is tied to the potential of looking at our own bid and what that would produce. But those are multi-year, probably outside of an accomplishment in the next two years. But you can explore or evaluate, or, you know, something that indicates you're at step one of that.
Hold a study session on.
There you go. You're back to your study sessions.
Yeah, if any of these are too broad, I think, then putting in the goal of, hold a study session on it, of saying, this is their first discussion of it. I think that could work for many of the bullet points in this section so far.
So anytime I get a little bit of angst, I will propose a study session. We can shape it as we go, yeah.
That works, yeah.
Okay, how are we doing break-wise? We're on Goal Four, and I'm going to ask now, is this need to be in here? But right now, there's eight on the list. Do we want to continue on? Do we need 10 minutes break here? Been at it for a couple hours.
How many bullet points do we have for each of them so far? Seems like we're at an average of about four, which, well, not quite four.
Well, housing.
Quite an average. Housing. Because if we have an average of four, then we're hitting like 32 objectives, which seems in line with the goal to simplify it down to achievable.
Yes. If these are really work plan items, not objectives.
I would say that these are, these, when you say explore, right? That's really a good objective. That's a good objective.
But are these objectives, so in the reformatted plan, each objective had, here's the objective, by doing this, by doing this, by doing this, by doing this, by doing this.
And so that's.
Four of those under each of these.
Right.
You've got 120.
I was not thinking we would do anything under any of those. This is with the idea that we are essentially combining the idea of a work plan item and an objective.
We're essentially eliminating the work plan item level. Okay.
Remember, so this is your, this is your council vision, direction. What comes underneath these objectives? You've now handed that off to staff to develop the work plan for each one of those. So you have three objectives currently under, it's called, we, I, we, there's different wording here, because your goal two is engaging our diverse community. So does that still work here? Does diversity, inclusivity, and equity work better?
Go back to, go, say that again, sorry.
The goal, as it's currently described, is engaging our diverse community.
Right, so it's active, it's got a verb or an infinitive.
Got a verb.
Yeah.
Does that still work? Is that, and remember, at least, and I think you also endorsed this, all four said, this is a goal. This is a really important goal.
I think we talked about last time, engage seemed a little, a little passive.
Yeah, diversity, inclusivity, and equity is good, well, usually the term of art is switching two of those. But if it can be encouraging or increasing, that, I'm not married to engage our diverse community, is the language we're using.
Engage and foster?
Engage, engage and foster our diverse community, or engage and foster diversity, equity, and inclusion?
I think engage and foster our diversity, inclusivity, and equity. Yeah, thanks. It was like.
Could we try? What do you, what do you want to accomplish? We'll come back to the wording. What do you want to accomplish in the next year on this?
Well, we've got in here implementing our racial equity survey.
Okay.
Which I think is an important one.
So, yeah, so one of the objectives, implement the racial equity survey. You had, in there, you have economic diversity is one of the objectives.
There was also an email that prior council member Peggy McQuade had sent, that I want to make sure that we don't lose, don't lose that piece of things. That was something that came out of the SEJC with regards to the aging piece. And you'll have to help me here.
There was also, sorry, a line that said, council establish a senior advisory committee, was the second bullet. So the first was the network of, join the network of age-friendly communities. And the second was, the council established a senior advisor committee.
And I think those are, those are both very important. They had already met and realized that those were some of the things that were key pieces. And, you know, it was, I'll just give you kind of a quick little story here on that. I was meeting with the senior center, and, you know, they brought up the fact that our activity guide was this little tiny book, and they're like, I can't read this. You know, and, and of the six or seven people that I met with, only two of them actually had smartphones or capability of accessing things online. So I want to really make sure that we don't, you know, we, we need to make sure that everyone has access to the information that we have out, out here for our community, and not just people who have smartphones or people who can read really tiny print. You know, so I want to make sure that our senior community is not forgotten, because that's near and dear to my heart.
So it could be something like increase accessibility to city services, information, something.
Resources.
Resources.
I think I got five phone calls from people when the first storm hit. How do I find out about sandbags? So.
Increase accessibility to city services, resources, and information. How about just accessibility, increase accessibility? Anything else?
The city's made considerable progress in enrolling low-income households for exemptions and rebates from taxes. Quadrupled in 10 years, but it's about 120 now, and the number of households that could qualify is about 600.
Okay.
So that's one I would keep from the prior strategic plan, is continuing to increase enrollment in tax rebates and exemptions.
Did you get that, Ann? Do you have that?
Yeah, this is tax exemption.
And I, if you don't mind, I.
Tax exemptions for low-income houses, or low-income residents.
If you don't mind, the password's never worked, so I finally thought, oh, I can look up what I sent you on my phone. So if we can go back to streets for a moment, I wanted to put street lighting under there, maintain and improve street lighting. Yeah, under transportation.
And President, that's above and beyond the study that's being done for the streetlights. So you're saying, maintain, maintain what we have.
Right, maintain what we have, which I think is going to be, as we've noted, the first thing that the consultant looks at. So maintain and increase. And then reauthorize Measure P1, which is the sidewalk repair measure, and possibly add street lighting to it. Thank you for allowing me to go back.
Good. Anything else? Okay. Anything else under engage our, engagement, foster our diverse community?
Yeah, so a question for Nicole. Goal two, objective one, was support local community events that recognize the breadth of cultures in Albany. So the first one is provided outreach and staff support for a series of events. Is that now qualifying as under, under the levels of water? It's something that you guys are actively, you've implemented?
Yeah.
Would, there was a second bullet point there that says continued engagement, and I'm not going to pronounce that because I don't, Segorate, thank you, land trust, to identify opportunities for use of the Albany Hill and other areas. Is that, so it says continued? Is that something that you're still, still working on?
Yeah.
So not necessarily something we have to identify? Okay.
Yeah, no, that's probably ongoing.
Sorry, I raised that only because I heard a lot of discussion about the trees on Albany Hill, eucalyptus trees. It's an opportunity to reach out to the land trust and talk about what would make sense to actually plant in replacement of those trees, so.
Definitely. That, that is underway.
Okay, anything else?
We may elect, I want to just prepare the council for your second bullet there on senior advisory committee. It's very specific to one group of people. We may already be accomplishing that, or if we're, we're close to it, there may be ways we adapt our existing services to ensure that engagement. I'm not necessarily seeing that as the most effective place in this plan for something that really is at the operations level and through our senior center. If there's a way that we could use the language, Sean, you had a word. And the word was.
Something like enhance programs and services for residents across the lifespan.
I'm more comfortable with that, yeah.
I was working with the city that had childcare as one of their strategic goals, but you've got childcare, you've got youth, teens, seniors.
Bingo, yes.
I like that.
For enhance program and services across the lifespan.
I think one of the ways of engaging and fostering a diverse community, or diversity, inclusivity, and equity, would be to, you know, and it's kind of like going along with a lot of, this stuff is, is just in general, kind of enhancing the way that we communicate. Because I keep hearing all the time from across the board is, the city doesn't communicate, and the city says, oh, we. and the city says, oh, we did communicate, we did this. Well, obviously, if the one hand is saying, we did, and the other one still keeps saying, we haven't heard, we're still not doing a good enough job at actually making that happen. So.
And I, I think that gets folded into this one. So it could be increased accessibility and enhanced communication to residents about city resources.
I definitely agree we could fold that in. I think this one begs for a study session. I've, I've discussed with Nicole of like, because you're, you're right, we have this conversation, but it's never, it's, you know, could we have done one step more on this thing? It's not, what I want is a holistic conversation about our communication because also saying enhanced communication is kind of nothing, that's not clear direction. So looking at, okay, what are all of our policies? Are we doing them right? Do we think we need to go an extra mile on some things, on everything? You know, what new things do we need to put in place? That seems more beneficial to me.
Yeah, because I see sometimes, I think also some of our pipelines are broken, so to speak, through a process and procedure look. So that's come up a few times as well, so absolutely.
Website, social media, hard copy, newsletters.
Even sometimes as simple as email communication. You know, it took me a little bit of time too, to kind of recognize and understand like when the city, when, when a community member emails city council or emails staff about something, what is, what is the anticipation level of response? You know, are, are they to see a response within so many hours? Are there things that can't be responded to for one reason or another? And just really keeping that, that two-way communication going on for people who have applied for, you know, some of the committees or commissions and may not know where their application stands or when they might hear back. So just making sure that we have a clear role of what, what the policy procedure expectation type of thing is, yeah.
We can move on to goal five. Does this stay in as a strategic goal?
I mean, does this really seem like it's already just happening though? I mean, is this below the waterline?
Yes, it is pretty much happening in the sense that we've, you've already given us direction that to implement the POP 68 projects. And then everything that is outlined in the plan will either come to you through the CIP or other, through advisory bodies.
I mean, to me, this would be something that I would, I could see as removing, just to give more focus and attention if this is already being worked on, it's under the waterline, I just don't, I don't think.
I see Anne highlighting it so before. Where she takes a step. So the idea was raised since the 11 acre parcel is on the market for the first time in.
Oh, it's been there for a while, yeah.
It's been on the market for a while, but it's the first time it's been on the market, I believe, in decades.
It's been there for the last six years at least on LoopNet.
Okay. Well, in any case, somebody, somebody suggested that we buy it. To expand Albany Hill Park. And then, you know, have control over rezoning the lower third and.
I'd like to see a hotel.
Well, whatever, I mean, it's, it's an opportunity that I don't think we should pass up. And that, to me, that would come under this. I mean, it could have some nexus with affordable housing, you know, the bottom third, the city could sell and do a land swap for property on San Pablo or on Swano for an affordable housing development. So that's, that's a big item. That is not in the park's master plan.
But it's not something that could really be done in the next two years. I think it'd be something that.
It could fall under, I mean, the old goal was maximize open space, right? So if it's an exploration of potential funding sources for acquisition of property, we don't even have to specify which property, honestly, in, in this, but.
I'm.
Not sure they actually know, I think, but we want that in the strategic plan because, like, we're.
I'm more of like a study session.
Sounds like a closed session discussion as opposed to.
Is that on staff's work plan, exploring the acquisition of the property?
No.
It's not in the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, the reason, the reason I have it there is what would happen in two years is potentially a bond measure. If we can't get funding for it or we get, do a bond measure to develop enough local funding to get the grant match or whatever, but it can definitely happen in two years.
Isn't, and isn't there something that has to be, what had to be, measure K had to be repealed for that?
I don't know, yeah.
No, measure, after the housing element, measure K affects this parcel, which we would need to.
Yeah, sorry.
Put back on the ballot potentially in '24.
And the property acquisition would be for park, would be to expand the park.
As I say, it would serve two purposes in, in my current vision, which is, you know, certainly open to what others say, but the upper two thirds would go to park, the lower third would be made available for development.
It's in the housing element as well.
Okay, council, given the exploration of the property, potential acquisition, does that still stay up there as a strategic goal?
I mean, it could potentially come under the housing item.
Housing.
And that way you could eliminate this goal and keep it under, but put it under housing and it would still have this cross benefit for park.
Yeah.
Maximization.
I had a question for staff before we eliminate. So there's goal three, objective two, develop a forest management plan for Albany Hill. So I see in that that there's a lot of work that's been done. You say there's foundational work done. Is that again, something that's just, you guys are just, you work on it, we don't, you understand that we want that type of, okay?
Absolutely. This is an ongoing incredibly high priority that's being managed and updates come to the PROS Commission and are due to the council in the near future too.
Thank you. So with that, then I have, that was the only one that I saw from the old list. I was like, it was something that seemed.
And the property acquisition.
Yeah, to housing.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so we're, we're on to goal six, which is now goal five. Economic development, obviously, there is a couple of objectives in the current plan there. Also, of course, in the current plan, it's economic development and the arts. Does that still stay?
I don't, I don't see it combined. I don't, and, yeah.
What I, what I heard is this is really important because of revenue. That's what's.
Economic development.
The economic development, that's what's driving this.
The arts doesn't connect.
Okay, very good. So reducing this one down, the economic development, and keeping that one separate, as the mayor suggested, from this goal on increasing revenue.
Well, yeah.
Can I raise, sorry.
Separating those out.
Can I raise one question? So is economic development actually something that should be under goal six, increasing revenue?
That's what I think.
Well, they, that's the question.
Yes.
Or separate those or, or combine those?
I would go back, sorry, to the conversation about economic development and the arts. When we initially talked about economic development and the arts, a little bit of what we talked about was branding, helping advertise what makes us so special and why you should come spend money here. That could either be something that gets moved under goal six or is economic del, renamed?
Well, and, and the economic development committee got sunsetted, so that.
So we have quite a bit of depth in this area at the staff level and we are working on the branding and we do have the technical consulting piece. So I think it would be duplicative to have in the strategic plan, at least at the programmatic level, because it's already established. Whereas when this plan was developed initially, that was, we didn't have that programming at the staff level.
So you're saying we can probably get rid of goal five altogether, or, yeah.
I think so. We're doing it and it's an ongoing priority. You know, I'm seeing that as the council deletes some things, at some point, we may need to have some, some way to recognize that while they're not necessarily explicit in the plan, there's still ongoing priorities for the city and.
Just so that the community.
What that means. So you don't feel like you're losing anything necessarily or it's less important, but it's so programmed out already.
Exactly, and just below the waterline, right? Didn't go away, it's just part of the day-to-day operations.
Which is a good thing.
Yeah.
Which is a good thing.
Oh, yeah, it's a great thing.
Absolutely, yeah. It's an indicator of success.
Yeah, this is a good example of something that was above the line and is now under.
Okay, so then we move on to increase revenue, increasing our general fund. And I'm wondering if the rest of that isn't the objective.
Yes, that's what I was about to say. I would say everything after increased revenue would be an objective.
And is there anything else? Besides the unfunded liabilities?
I mean, there's, one thing that's ongoing is securing, trying to finally secure contributions from UC. Yeah. Secure contributions from UC Berkeley.
Where is?
Are services provided or are we just leaving it vague? I'm, I'm trying to understand.
Sure, yeah, I mean, that's for services provided, sure. I mean, yes, it's because we provide service to them, but I don't want to say necessarily for service provided because.
Yeah.
We're not like billing them for the service, we're negotiating.
Just out of curiosity, what kind of services?
Oh, fire.
Oh, okay, okay.
Emergency. PD, not as much.
They've got campus university.
Other emergency services, yeah.
Okay.
You know, something I'm not seeing here, which has gotten brought up a lot too, and I'm not sure exactly where that, where it would fall, but code enforcement. Something that I feel like we've been lacking on, and maybe this is part of our increasing our revenue, is finding a way to, and I know right now, again, we've fallen to that, you know, we don't have the staff to provide that. But, you know, code enforcement and then also, you know, control of like some, some, we saw some emails come through about, you know, the blight. Stopping some of the properties that, you know, haven't been well maintained because of graffiti or whatever, having some sort of a system or code enforcement in place where we, those places could be fined or, you know, if they don't take care of or manage their properties. Because that also goes into, you know, being a very welcoming city for businesses, you know, a business doesn't want to come in to a business district and see graffiti all over the place and see stickers all over the poles and poor lighting and bad tree management and all this other kind of stuff that all kind of goes in hand to hand, but we don't really have anything that's addressing the code enforcement piece of things right now.
So I'm, I'm, I am cautious about putting code enforcement under something titled increase revenue.
Agreed.
That's why I said I wasn't sure where it really went.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But I kind of feel like it needs to be in there somewhere.
If you have, could you scroll down, Anne?
What I can say on code enforcement is at the city manager level, organizationally, we're researching opportunities to implement a program and what the funding would look like to stand something up. Fine if, if the council would like to prioritize that within your strategic plan as well to, to marry up, but that research is also underway.
Which I was going to say, just saying code enforcement is pretty big. And I can see how that could give Nicole a migraine to some extent, especially because code enforcement, like every city and the county wants code enforcement, no one has it to the extent we need it in because it's such a hard thing to provide that no one has the funding and staff time for. So that's, that's a pretty big thing to have in there. So I'm glad to hear it's already on the way. I would say if we move it to goal seven, maybe a study session on code enforcement and what our options are and what funding could be and where we need it and all this sort of stuff, instead of just saying.
Sure.
Develop code enforcement, which is not really that helpful.
Yeah, it works well. If I can move back up to the third bullet, I appreciate how specific it is. I'm concerned about that level of being that specific in a strategic plan, knowing that this could go different ways. And hopefully that gives you enough feedback without getting into the weeds on it. If, if we could say something more about outside agencies or if there's another way that you'd like it nuanced, that's great. As you know, it's underway, I just might want to give it a bit more of a rounded edge.
And that would also speak to, instead of secure contributions, like funding partnerships, because this also speaks to like supporting the BAFA housing bond.
Or the county.
County, yes.
All of these, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's, and that's helps, you're going to have more revenue, right? The broader you make that.
I guess, so should, should a piece be put in here, added in here about exploration of grant opportunities or, and maybe another one that says exploration of other revenue generating streams?
Grant opportunities are well ingrained and we have a third party that helps administer that search for us, so I think that's underway.
How about exploration of other revenue generating streams?
Sure. Because there's more than just parcel taxes, yeah.
And I think that fits a little bit under the first one, but it might be other revenue streams that are not general funds.
Yeah, with, with some words missing, I could see some of these.
Yeah, some of those, some of those coming together.
Sure.
So, yeah, in that regard, we, I think we learned a lot about restructuring the business license taxes in the last session. I see opportunity there.
Thinking about a business license tax.
So we have a business license tax, but it's restructuring the one that we have, which could be done both for greater revenue and for greater equity.
Other cities have been successful. And that didn't have one, getting one or restructuring the ones that they do have. Okay, and increase public health and safety. The code enforcement, it doesn't, not necessarily code enforcement, but you did mention, I'm not going to use the word blight, but did use the unattended properties or something like that, if that's important.
Abandoned, abandoned properties.
Abandoned properties, that kind of thing. Is that important?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm just thinking to a specific one that I walk by three days a week that I think is just a total eyesore. And it's just, it would be, it would be nice to be able to, to be able to do something about that so that the neighboring businesses didn't feel the impact of, of, of that. And also, you know, I mean, just in general, it collects, collects a lot of stuff, it attracts, you know, maybe not the best, you know, scenario around certain locations.
Broken windows theory, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Something's unattended, it becomes even more unattended. So under, under this one, disaster preparedness, Vice Mayor Mickey suggested in the pre-workshop survey, where's the city on disaster preparedness?
We are leaps and bounds focused in this area as well, not something that the council necessarily sees as frequently, but as we're updating our emergency operations plan, the council has a significant role once that is in a form that will come to the council in a study session, as well as a training session on, on your role in the event of an emergency. So this is, again, pretty programmed in, but I think important to include in your strategic plan because there's the overlap with the nonprofit organization as well as community groups in general.
Yeah, and I, my, my comments on disaster preparedness really maybe not exactly the same as what council member Jordan raised earlier, but just this idea of understanding how we can, in resiliency planning, spread out, not put all of our planning into one or two properties, but spread it across the community, either through our parks or through other agencies, I guess I would say.
As a plant planning, resiliency hubs and facilities.
And do we want resiliency in the goal? Increase public health, safety and resiliency? I heard that earlier.
Yeah.
And then you, if you look at the current. And then you, if you look at the current strategic plan, it's Objective Four under Goal One, and then there's several work plan items that could be leveled up to the objective level if any of those still are relevant and usable to you.
Um, yeah, so, and I think a bullet would be identify or develop resiliency hubs and facilities.
That's through CERT?
That's CERT, yeah.
So that, that is underway through our CERT organization and coordination with the Fire Department already.
Okay, okay, maybe it doesn't.
So I'm in this weird place, because they're definitely priorities, but they're underway, so.
Does that include conversations with UC and AUSD?
Yeah.
Perfect, then I'm, that's.
So I think what it is, is that staff owes an update to the council in this area, is what I'm hearing, and so maybe it's a, it's a, putting something in here about making, keeping the council apprised of progress.
That can go under the communicator.
Right, it is interesting how it all blends.
Okay on the wording there? And that's the one to keep council updated on, probably?
Well, it's both. I mean, I'm hearing a study session on code enforcement, which I think is unkept properties, and then.
Let's put code enforcement and unkept properties.
Disaster preparedness is more about, you know, training and ongoing learning and skill sets, so.
You could say continue preparation and training in disaster preparedness.
Yeah.
That is kind of below the waterline, what you're saying, is it's already built in.
Right. Although there is a component that is the council level, ensuring they're engaged and aware of their duties and.
And then we can keep the language.
Okay.
We have duties? Oh.
Haven't been through the disaster.
It's coming for me.
Your time is coming. You have in there addiction, mental health, and homelessness service, services?
And that's something that got taken, when do they start? There, there was.
The mobile crisis.
Yes, yes, yes.
Early summer.
Early summer.
Yeah, it's underway. Again, all of these are programmed at the staff level or through third parties at this point. We do, we do schedule status updates periodically.
Yeah, our provider of homeless services does, do provide, does provide quarterly reports that we post on the city website, and then they come to the council for, for a report when the contract is up.
Okay.
And the mobile crisis team, we've built in progress reports as well on that, as it's a pilot, so we'll want to learn and shape as we move along.
Anything else for Goal Seven?
Is this now Goal Six also?
Yeah, now it's just Goal Six, yeah.
Thank you, Ann.
Okay.
I was interested in code enforcement on residential property as well, and I don't know if code enforcement is only exterior, or if that's also interior.
It can be interior, depending on, like, say, for example, somebody were to, you know, remodel their kitchen without permits and stuff like that.
Like, I'm thinking particularly of rental, rented residences, because I've heard some pretty.
I was definitely thinking, we would be looking at both as part of this, generalized discussion on code enforcement.
So it's there, all right, good deal.
Well, it's going to be a study session.
Oh, it's going to be a study.
I mean, yeah, it might be.
Call that out, or is that just kind of applied, assumed?
I think that's good.
Okay.
Add a question.
What's on Goal Six? Ann, just scroll up, and let's just look at the whole list, and we can just scroll down. Okay, advanced climate action and adaptation, and I'm assuming these are not in priority order, even though they're numbered, unless you tell me differently. Your housing availability and quality, Goal Two, your third goal is streets, transportation, safety, mobility. Goal Four is diversity, well, let's figure out the language here. Engage and foster our diverse communities, does that work? Or do you want to work in the diversity equity?
Can we, sorry, can I try wordsmithing this? Engage and foster diversity, inclusivity, and equity in our diverse community? So just move our diverse community to the end, essentially.
I was saying.
Sorry, we can get rid of diverse, just say in our community.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
So engage and foster diversity, equity, and inclusion in our community.
No, say it. Come on. Calling you out.
I have a faint memory, and I wasn't even going to bother, but thank you. The word foster at one point created pause, and I'm not quite sure I'm remembering why.
Not strong enough?
It, it wasn't well received.
And I think the reason it's, because it's already there. The diversity, inclusivity, and equity in our communities is, well, the diversity is already there.
We say engage and celebrate. Can we change it to foster to celebrate? Celebrate? I mean, that would match with many of the objectives that were listed in the past.
Yeah.
Yes, though I would also change the word engage, because I don't think it makes sense grammatically, and it's causing me some physical pain. So, if, celebrate also feels noncommittal, so if anything, I would say increase diversity, inclusivity, and equity in our community, which.
How about increase and explore? Because we're learning things new every day about.
That's grammatically correct, so I'm okay with it.
I'm, I'm just thinking of a community member, what are you exploring?
Yeah.
I'm here, I'm a person of color, I'm here in your community.
Right, exactly.
You don't need to explore me.
Well, I'm just, I'm thinking of it in the sense of exploring the different opportunities of, yeah.
This is putting back.
She's all, do I put it back?
Yes.
Yeah, and we'll.
It's got a little.
Yeah, we'll research.
Let's let some.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, I was about to suggest that.
Okay, and we can, okay, so there's your Goal Four, and Goal Five is increased revenue, and Goal Six is public health, safety, and resilience. Council, you okay with this?
Yeah.
First draft?
Yes.
Full draft?
One bullet, I'm sorry, one bullet for potential consideration under Goal Six, based on some feedback from the community in general, is whether the council would like anything around public safety response, or, you know, just ensuring that public safety is, is paramount in your overall priorities, and expressing that through the goal. Because right now, it's focused mostly on disaster preparedness versus emergency response.
So what would you say there?
I'm not going to come up with it right now, but.
Is it, that isn't below the waterline?
Well, you know.
I mean, so, is there something that needs to be changed, improved, focused upon, advanced?
Right, right, right. I'm not quite sure.
Okay.
Let me, let me.
I mean, if you.
Raise it.
Certainly open if you know something, you think of something.
But I don't know how to synthesize it, so.
Well, and one of the things that you, you could do, it's below the waterline, but it's so important to the community, we want to signal to them that we, we've got this. We're, we're attending to this. It's not the, always the best reason for bringing it into the strategic plan, but sometimes something is so burning, right, so immediate, that the community wants to know council's attending to it.
And I guess, going back to the whole approach of having important qualifiers in the goal itself, it's expressed, and it's subject to interpretation.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I'm curious what, now you've got me curious.
Sorry.
What was the, what's the concern you've heard?
You know, an example is when we had all the vandalism on Solano. What are you doing? How are you solving this problem? And that's a complicated response, and I think we did a significant, quick response, and through across departments, but, you know, ensuring that the community is aware that we prioritize and ensure that we have the resources to respond to situations when they arise. But again, that, that's local government 101 as well, so it may be expressed fine in the goal itself.
Yeah, but also, I mean, I mean, like, to add to that kind of thing, like the incident that we had up here, you know, because the curb ramps are all being done in the rain, came and, you know, somebody got hit, and thankfully they're okay, but, you know, having, having that kind of, again, response communication, so that the community is kind of, and I don't know if there's a better way to inform people about what's going on, what's anticipated, with some of this stuff or not, you know, where, you know, even though we're asking somebody to go cross up a block, did we take a look at how safe is that block to be crossing? I don't know where that goes there, but just to put that out there. And I don't know if this, and maybe you, you told me this before, and I have totally forgotten, are we revamping our city website?
We're, yeah.
Yeah, we're looking into options, but it's going to take, yes, at least a year out.
Gotcha.
And that can go under your communication with the community, right? And making accessible information and resources.
And that's a, that's a great example of something that isn't necessarily articulated directly, but will accomplish quite a bit, including searchability.
Yay.
I had to share that. Okay.
Okay, we have accomplished the goals of the session today. Anything else from council?
Just wanted to mention that A, I think that's 28 bullet points?
Is it 28?
Which is pretty good. I counted while we were scrolling, which I think I counted right.
So we did good?
So I think we did good.
I would say yes, absolutely.
And then I wanted to see if we, now would be a good time to do public comment before we wrap up.
I think so.
Yeah.
29.
Twenty, 29 people?
No, we added.
Oh, 29, oh, okay.
We added, we added one more.
It's like, what?
Really? 29, thank you. 29, still pretty good. Can we go to public comment, please, and thank you?
Okay, I think now we can hear you, Julie. Go ahead.
Hold on, Julie, one second. We are having some audio difficulties. Is it because we have not joined audio on the Zoom conference on that computer?
Oh.
Recording in progress.
Julie, can you try talking now?
Yeah, can you hear me? There's an echo.
Nope, one second. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, try now.
Can you hear me now? There's an echo still.
I think it's right there. Julie, just go ahead and speak, and I may have to repeat you, repeat what you said.
It's also echoing, you're echoing.
We're in a different location, so go ahead and try.
I am trying.
Now go ahead and speak your public comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, but I have a long comment. You're going to repeat everything I said.
Can you guys hear her? Okay, no, not at all.
Ann?
Oh. Hold on a second, Julie.
That was very nice of them.
Go to LGTB display. Ooh, that sounded better.
Try talking now.
Hey, Julie.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can, yes, we can.
Okay. I'm getting an echo, I don't know if you are, but I am. Anyway, thank you, thank you very much for the conversation. I had a lot of comments I wanted to make, and then you, one way I uncovered a lot of it, which I really appreciated. So these are kind of jumping all over the place, because I had some written out, but I had to like move things around. So first of all, I just wanted to encourage you to define the term public safety, because I don't think it's always clear what that means. Who feels safe, who doesn't? I really like the objective above the waterline and below the waterline, and I think above the waterline should be keeping the community informed and engaged, and I know that's been brought up by Councilmember Hansom Romero, particularly when I've been up, but I wanted to really emphasize that, and I think one way of doing that would be to have a commission that was a communication commission, because once CMAP was sunsetted, we lost anybody assigned to do that, and as the city manager has pointed out, there's, the staff does have a lot of time to handle it, to take on everything. I think that would be a great thing to add to your list. I wanted to, let's see, I, Councilmember Hansom Romero, I just wanted to question, you're saying landowners' rights and same as tenants' rights, and, and, let's see, sorry, I just have so many things here. Most of all, I guess I wanted to say, I, to start with, engage our diverse community, that there are two ways of looking at all of it. You could say simply serving those who aren't here, or doing that, but also making efforts to bring a more racially, culturally, and economically diverse community. And I would really like to see that emphasis on that, so it isn't just on engaging people who are here, but also bringing in increased diversity, and I think that the Vice Mayor actually talked about that too, when you were completing that one, it's a good thing. The objectives, I appreciate that, and most of all, to me, I guess the overall thing I'd like to say is that is the communication. I'm, I've been talking about this for several city council meetings, and, oh, let's see, I have one that needs to be explained, okay. Communication, I think, is really critical. Where's it being posted? Who knows? What are you talking about? People hearing, reflecting, being able to actually know that people are here, I think, about that, so sorry. Very, all of it, all of it was because I know some of the doubts, and you guys covered so much. I want also, which is, I guess, I'll end by saying, well, I think it's important to get input from the community and also engage local community members. to get input from the community and also engage with all the community members, so it's to let them know that you actually, you want to hear from them and that you want very good. I would encourage you not to use the word resilient. Resilience is a shorthand for having to endure things that shouldn't have to be endured, and I think it's a word that should never be used. And finally, the conflation and addiction, mental health and homelessness, I hate that that happens, it happens all the time. Those terms are not synonymous. Addiction is a mental health issue, lots of houses, people have mental health challenges. That, to me, it would be like saying, we're going to address white, Christian men and violent behavior such as mass murdering as a topic conflating those terms. So I would really encourage you to not have those terms conflated. Thank you for listening to me, and then for the radio.
Amen. Testing, okay. And I'm assuming that was the only public comment we have? Great. Then I think we're back.
We're ready to close out the meeting unless council has anything else to add? Nicole?
Thank you for the time, more than we say I'm going to. Appreciate that, we'll be on the last one, we'll come back, we have something put together and refine what we heard today and the course and stuff.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you for, especially the staff feedback on everything we're doing. I think we've made a more actionable sort of plan. And we look forward to coming, this coming back, unless council has any other comments?
Yep, just thank you so much, and I, I really am happy to see you back here working with us again. I think it's really beneficial and, yeah.
Well, I, I will say you have a good thing going on in Albany with your council staff relations, and I said that last time, and it's not a trope. It's, it's genuine from the heart and the head.
Excellent, then thank you, staff, thank you, other members of council, vice mayor. Thank you very much to our city clerk and assistant city clerk for taking live notes and translating, that was very, very useful. For our tech for making this all work. And for everyone who stuck through a fairly long meeting. And with that, we are adjourned, thank you all.